Alrighty, good morning, good morning and welcome to our monthly Queensborough President Hyatt Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person and the Borough President's second floor conference room, 200 at 120-55 Queens Boulevard in Kew Gardens, and livestreamed on our YouTube channel, www.youtube.com/QueensBP. I am Queensborough President Donovan Richards and I will be chairing this land use public hearing. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit www.queensbp.nyc.gov, www.queensbp.nyc.gov. If you are attending our public hearing in person, please see our staff to sign up for public speaking time if you have not already done so. Please note that your opportunity to speak will follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcomed from those who are unable to testify. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today. It may be submitted by email to planning@queensbp.org, planning@queensbp.org, or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queensborough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226 Kew Gardens, New York 11424. Once again, 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226 Kew Gardens, New York 11424. Lisa, please review. Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set the rules in a minute. We will remove you, so let's not do this today. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Thank you. We will. So Lisa, please review how this public hearing will proceed. Lisa, read the instructions on the land use calendar 10:05 AM. Open, and you now begin to open the hearing.
Thank you. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the zoning action requested, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each- Set item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. Please note, if you are testifying virtually, you must have your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have any technical issues, please let our planning staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Alright, you've just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. Of course, either Chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the applications or comments. And I just ask everybody, I know that there are many people passionate on both sides of this issue to remain respectful. You can disagree or agree, but do it in a respectful manner. And I will also add that this was not a charter mandated hearing. Let me say that again. This was not charter mandated. We are doing this hearing because we believe in being transparent in hearing from all sides, no matter where we arrive on this decision. So most Borough Presidents did not have a hearing on this. We are the only one doing this. So let me just start with that premise as well. Lisa, please call the first calendar item.
Calendar item number one, the City of Yes, ULP number 240290ZRY. The applicant is New York City Department of City Planning. Applicant, please begin. Yes, please.
And one minute?
And pause.
Should I just say next slide? I'm not sure the remote is working unless I'm not doing it right. There we go. Hello, I'm Veronica Brown from the Department of City Planning. I'll be doing a brief presentation about City of Yes for Housing Opportunity before the public hearing. We're excited for you to be here to hear about City of Yes for Housing Opportunity, which is a citywide text amendment that will change zoning to allow for equitable housing development. These changes will enable more housing in every neighborhood by removing barriers to housing growth. These changes respond to our severe housing shortage. The vacancy rate for rental apartments is historically low. It's only 1.4% citywide and 0.88% in Queens. This shortage has direct human consequences. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity is a citywide plan that will encourage incremental housing growth over a wide geography, the entire city. If every neighborhood were to add a little more housing, we could add a significant amount of housing overall with no one neighborhood experiencing dramatic changes or overtaxed infrastructure. So I'll be providing a brief overview of the proposals before I get into the specifics. And this text amendment is the biggest pro-housing change that DCP has ever undertaken. It will change the zoning for every part of the city. Across the city, the proposal would remove residential parking mandates, which make housing more expensive. The proposal would add more missing middle housing or low-rise apartment buildings in low-density neighborhoods. And the proposal would also help homeowners in our low-density neighborhoods by allowing them to add accessory dwelling units to their home or providing small buildings with additional flexibility to adapt over time. In the medium and high-density areas, the proposal would create a universal affordability preference, which would allow for buildings to be at least 20% larger so long as that extra space is occupied by permanently affordable housing. Throughout this presentation, I'll also show maps that display how each of these proposals apply to Queens. Here on this map, you see the low-density R1 to R5 zoning districts in blue, and the medium and high-density R6 to R10 districts in the orange. I'll start with the low-density proposals for this presentation. So exclusionary zoning rules have made it virtually impossible to build housing in many low-density neighborhoods in New York City. This places additional pressure on the high-density parts of the city to produce more and more housing. This wasn't always the case. Small apartment buildings in two-to-three-family homes are common in New York City's lower-density neighborhoods, and they were allowed in many places until as recently as the 90s and early 2000s, when stricter zoning began to prevent them. City of Yes for Housing Opportunity would reintroduce these modest buildings that are more naturally affordable than other types of construction, and it would introduce apartment buildings at a scale in which they could take advantage of existing affordability programs offered by the city or state. Together, these changes allow for the creation of more housing in our low-density neighborhoods without affecting neighborhood character. Here, you see the low-density neighborhoods in Queens, the one-family districts, two-family districts, and low-density multifamily districts. Again, this focuses on R1 to R5 zoning districts. So the first proposal is town center, which aims to create more housing in our low-density areas. This proposal aims to re-legalize mixed-use apartments or buildings with a ground-floor commercial use and a few stories of housing on top. This is a classic New York City building type that exists along many low-density commercial corridors throughout New York City. Overly complex zoning rules make it impossible to build new ones. This proposal would streamline zoning rules, including restrictive limits on floor area and height, so that it's once again possible to build two-to-four stories of housing above a commercial ground floor. Our second proposal is transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented development would allow for low-rise buildings, three-to-five stories, depending on the height limit of the underlying zoning district, on sites that are near transit when they meet specific criteria. So to be eligible for transit-oriented development, first, the site must be on a block within half a mile of a subway or rail station, which you see on this map. Second, the lot must be over 5,000 square feet, which is about twice the size of an average city lot. And finally, the lot must be located on the short end of the block or a wide street, which zoning defines as being over 75 feet wide. Community facilities like faith-based organizations or libraries could also use these rules throughout the city on sites that are over 5,000 square feet if a community facility space is present, even if they don't meet the other qualifying criteria. Our transit-oriented development rules would help to promote missing middle housing while also promoting sustainability by adding housing in the parts of our city that are close to transit. In the rest of the low-density areas, the proposal aims to give homeowners some additional flexibility. Under this proposal, a one- or a two-family home would be allowed to add a small accessory dwelling unit or an ADU. There are a range of types of ADUs, including backyard cottages, garage conversions, and basement apartments. These small units could provide important housing options for small households, like a young person moving into their own place for the first time, or an elderly resident who wants to age in place. Because of their small size, they would also serve different income levels than a large single-family home. The proposal includes rules to ensure that accessory dwelling units are safe. New basement ADUs would not be allowed in the coastal floodplain, and no ADUs would be allowed in the special coastal risk districts, which are the parts of our city that face the most severe flood risk. Outside of these coastal areas, basement ADUs may be subject to additional regulations or review to make sure that they are safe. An inter-agency working group is currently working to develop these recommendations for rules outside of zoning, including building code that would ensure ADUs are safe for tenants. The same rules that enable ADUs could also help a homeowner who doesn't want to add an ADU but needs some flexibility to adapt or renovate their home to meet their needs. Our research shows us that many existing buildings are out of compliance, and this just means that they're not in line with today's rules. These non-compliances end up causing big headaches for homeowners if they need to borrow money from the bank, or if they want to make simple changes to their home, like renovating an outdated kitchen. This proposal would fix these rules, which would simply make one-family, two-family, and low-density multifamily districts able to build the building types that they already allow. In other words, a one-family district would continue to allow only one-family homes under this proposal, and a two-family district would continue to allow one- and two-family homes. These changes would have dual benefits. So first, homeowners of existing buildings won't run into issues when they go to make an alteration to their building, because the zoning would better match what's actually on the ground. And second, you'd actually be able to build a two-family home in a two-family district, or a multifamily building in a multifamily district, when today, the only thing that would be feasible is often a single-family home. We recognize the importance of homeownership in our low-density neighborhoods. For many New Yorkers in these areas, the pathway to homeownership has been to purchase a two-family home or a small multifamily building and rent out the additional units. The proposals for district fixes and accessory dwelling units would open up more opportunities for New Yorkers to follow this path. Next, I'm going to turn our attention to the medium and high-density areas of New York City, where our focus is on creating more opportunities for housing, including affordable housing. To do this, the proposal includes, introduces the Universal Affordability Preference, or UAP, which would allow apartment buildings to be at least 20% larger so long as anything in that extra space is occupied by permanently affordable or supportive housing. UAP is modeled after current rules that allow bigger buildings for affordable senior housing in some neighborhoods. UAP would allow incremental housing growth in neighborhoods and encourage affordable housing throughout the city rather than concentrating it in a few areas. This map shows which districts have an existing senior housing preference today, shown in the light orange. Through the UAP framework, all forms of affordable and supportive housing would be able to take advantage of the higher floor area ratio, or FAR, that's already provided to affordable senior housing in these districts. However, there are a few districts that don't have the senior housing preference today. This is shown in dark orange, which is maybe a little hard to see on these projections, but you can see it on our website as well. In areas that don't have an existing senior housing preference today, the proposal would create new FARs to enable the growth of affordable and supportive housing in every neighborhood. This proposal would also make sure that zoning provides room to build the affordable housing that's required for universal affordability preference, so there would be limited height increases where that's necessary to make enough room for affordable homes. So what does affordability mean for UAP? UAP would have an affordability requirement of 60% of the area median income. The area median income, or AMI, is a measure of affordability that's established by the federal government. At 60% AMI, or about $76,000 for a family of three, UAP would serve lower-income New Yorkers than the existing zoning tool voluntary inclusionary housing. UAP would also serve New Yorkers at even lower income levels by income averaging. Income averaging means that instead of only including homes at the required affordability level, a building could include homes at a range of incomes that averaged the required affordability of 60% AMI. So for example, a building could meet UAP's 60% AMI affordability requirement by including a mix of homes at 30% AMI, 60% AMI, and 90% AMI. Through UAP's deeper affordability requirement and the introduction of income averaging, UAP can help to serve the low-income New Yorkers who most need affordable housing. Here's just an example of how UAP works. Let's say this is an R6 district. They want to build affordable housing. Today, they get 3.0 FAR, and that's regardless of whether you're building market rate or affordable housing. Let's say this allows them to build about 35 units. Under UAP, they'd get 3.9 FAR, but that additional .9 FAR could only be used for affordable housing, which would allow them to build about 10 to 12 more affordable units. 10 to 12 affordable units probably doesn't sound like very much in the face of today's housing crisis, but if every project across the city were including just a couple more affordable homes, that would be a significant amount of affordable housing available to New Yorkers who need it. This is just one more rendering of how UAP would play out. Again, without UAP, the building can only follow the FAR regardless of whether it's market or affordable, and it's allowed to be at least 20% larger with universal affordability preference if those homes are permanently affordable. Mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH, areas would remain in place and continue to be mapped when there are significant increases in residential density. This proposal would introduce some improvements to MIH. So first, under this proposal, MIH option three, which is sometimes known as the deep affordability option, could be applied as a standalone option. Today, it has to be applied as an alternate with MIH options one or two. This would allow future actions to ensure deep affordability when MIH is applied. Some MIH FARs would also be raised to meet UAP FARs, but the affordability requirement would remain in place. Finally, the current MIH program is incompatible with tools that facilitate affordable homeownership, so this proposal would exempt 100% affordable homeownership projects from rules that prevent them from penciling out. Finally, I'll present our parking proposals. This proposal would make parking optional for new housing everywhere, which follows the example of many other major cities. Today, New York City requires new housing to include off-street parking. These mandates mean less space for housing and increased construction costs, which result in less housing being built. Building parking is very expensive, and underground parking space can cost tens of thousands of dollars to provide. That's an obstacle to housing growth, especially affordable housing. The proposal prioritizes housing over parking. Parking would still be allowed, and we anticipate the developers will respond to market needs and continue to provide parking in areas where there's the demand for it. In many auto-oriented areas, developers are already providing more than the required parking in new buildings. Removing parking mandates can help to reduce the cost of housing construction and enable the development of a few more homes in each new building. This is just an example of how lifting parking mandates supports housing growth. Let's say a developer owns this lot that's in a great location near transit, and they want to build an apartment building. The lot could accommodate 16 homes, but today, the developer would stop at just 10, allowing them to wave out of the parking requirements. As soon as they were to add that 11th apartment, they would need to provide six parking spaces. By eliminating parking mandates, the developer would fully build out the lot and include those six additional apartments. Much like with the UAP example, six additional apartments probably doesn't sound very significant, but if hundreds of sites across the city are able to add more housing, that's an incremental change. It results in a lot more housing for New Yorkers. There are a few additional proposals that will provide more housing and a wider range of housing types, so I'll just briefly go through those now. Some of the major ones are first conversions. Today, outdated rules prevent vacant non-residential buildings, like offices, from converting into housing. For example, many buildings that were constructed after 1961 or that are located outside the city's largest office centers cannot be converted into housing. So City of Yes would make it easier for more recent vacant non-residential buildings throughout the entire city, which would include offices as well as other non-residential buildings, to convert into housing. Next, the proposal would also allow small and shared apartments. They would do so by eliminating the dwelling unit factor, a measure of the minimum average unit size in areas with the best transit access in today's transit zone, and it would reduce and simplify the dwelling unit factor throughout the rest of the city. This would enable buildings with only studios and one bedrooms. The proposal would also create a clear pathway for building shared housing, which has private bedrooms, but common kitchens or other facilities. These changes could provide more housing opportunities for New Yorkers who may want to live alone but don't have that option today. Enabling more small and shared apartments can also help to relieve some of the pressure on family-sized units by providing more opportunities for New Yorkers who are today teaming up with roommates and occupying a larger apartment. Finally, the proposed changes would allow for height-limited infill on sites that currently are only allowed to develop under rules known as height factor. These include campuses and other irregular sites. This change would help to encourage contextual development on those sites. So the changes I walked through tonight are the most significant, or today, are the most significant proposals. They're in City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. Overall, again, this is a text amendment that aims to create a little more housing everywhere, so that each neighborhood does its part to address our housing needs, and a few neighborhoods don't feel the intense pressure that they do today. It's not just about more housing, though. It's also about more types of housing. Multifamily housing, where it's currently not allowed because of exclusionary zoning, homes of different sizes to meet different people's needs, and crucially, far more affordable and supportive housing. More information and resources are available on our website. There's also a worksheet, which may help people to organize their feedback, but with that, I'll wrap up. Thanks so much for listening. We look forward to hearing everyone's comments today.
Thank you. So I'm going to hop in right into the question. So just take me back through how this proposal impacts single-family zoning. So you spoke of you would allow some buildings towards the end of blocks, and you just define that a little bit more?
Yeah, so just to clarify, for a single-family district specifically, single-family districts will continue to exist, but the core of this proposal is identifying appropriate housing opportunities for every zoning district, every neighborhood. And so in single-family districts, what that looks like is first accessory dwelling units. So a one-family building in a one-family district would be able to add a size-limited accessory dwelling unit to their property, only one, in a variety of typologies. They could do basement, garage, attached, but they can only do one. So that's the first proposal relevant to single-family districts.
So you would say that's for new construction, because most homes in Queens already have basement apartments?
Well, so the rules, the accessory dwelling unit rules, apply to both new construction units. So if you were building a new, you know, one-family home, you could also include an accessory dwelling in it, but they would also-
But it's one or the other. Sorry to cut you off. One or the other, you're saying? So you wouldn't be able to have both a basement apartment and a cottage?
Oh, yes. That's correct. Yeah.
And garage, so does that, or garage conversion as well?
Yes. You can only have one of those accessory dwelling units per site. So someone might use these rules to, like, they could potentially help with legalizing an existing unit, but there are other rules, obviously. There are obstacles to legalization, but some people, if they have, so let's say they have a one-family home and they have a garage, they might want to convert that. They might want to, you know, add another unit. So, but they can only do one of those typologies.
Let me ask you, so even on that, so we have a lot of existing homeowners who are already renting basements illegally. Would there be a particular program, maybe an amnesty program? So I'm interested in sort of hearing, once this goes into, if this goes into legalization, would then homeowners incur fines if their basements are not brought into compliance?
Well, so the primary obstacles to legalizing existing basement units are outside of zoning. There, you know, rules like building code and the state multiple dwelling law, other rules. So legalizing, a program to legalize those units would require action beyond this zoning change. This rule would get zoning out of the way, for example. Some, for example, legalizing a unit today might require you to add a second parking space under zoning, and that's, you know, maybe not feasible. So this would eliminate those zoning barriers, but those homeowners who are looking to legalize their existing units, informal units, would not, they would, to address their issues, there would need to be other actions. As I mentioned, there is this working group, inter-agency working group, which includes representatives from DOB, the Fire Department, Emergency Management, all of the relevant stakeholder agencies, and they will be suggesting complementary changes to codes outside of zoning, which may do more to help legalize existing units. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's the, there's the state legalization program for basements that's only available in select community districts, I believe, only in-
And I'm getting at that because my concern even on that, and I'm a supporter of basement apartments, the garages are, we'll get to that in a second, but what I would say, my big concern here is that, once this is legalized, DOB coming in, like gangbusters, and fining homeowners, in particular in places like southeast Queens. So I'm, and I know this is not necessarily just for you, this would be for DOB. I just want to make sure that we are not ballooning already a foreclosure issue that we have in pockets of the borough already, especially for black and brown homeowners. So that's my concern there. And then I think on the garages, I would have, I would need to hear a little bit more about what does infrastructure investment look like? And I, and I pretty much got a good depiction of how much the pricing would be to hook up, because I would assume the garages would have to hook up to the city sewer system. There are some areas of Queens which are already, we already have challenges. We're trying to fix those things as well. We just cut the ribbon on a 50, broke ground on a $51 million project in Rosedale, for instance, last week. But I say that to say, you have parts of the borough, like Rosedale, like parts of East Elmherz, who may not be coastal communities, but you may be really causing more of a flooding issue if we don't address the infrastructure challenges we have there already.
Yeah, certainly. So I'll respond first to the question about DOB enforcement, and then to the sort of backyard infrastructure issue type of question. So first, I don't think this creates new necessarily incentives for DOB to enforce, like, existing rules. You know, it's possible that a homeowner who has an informal apartment, you know, today, it would continue to violate building code or other relevant codes, but I don't necessarily see why this would create like a new, it would, yeah, DOB, it doesn't incentivize sort of like a predatory enforcement, you know, type of regime that you're worried about. I hear that concern, but I don't necessarily think that this, this creates new things for them to enforce. Obviously, they will continue to enforce existing rules for life and safety, you know, concerns, and we are working very closely with them as part of this inter-agency working group on a plan for enforcement, but also a plan for homeowner outreach. So people who might have those homes and want to legalize them know how to do so, and know how to do so on a timeline that's, that's realistic, and, you know, prioritizes the safety of the occupants, but also makes sure that we're not, you know, unfairly, you know, punishing people who are trying to get their apartments legalized. So that is, you know, a core concern of the working group. That working group is also working on a lot of issues relevant, I think, to the infrastructure question and the rear yard ADU issues. So some, you know, specific issues relevant to ADUs, like in the rear yard, you know, access. So Fire Department has been very concerned with that, as well as we're working with, you know, DP, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice are members of the working group, to make sure that these don't have any sort of, you know, effects on climate. We did do a full environmental impact statement, of course, which measures things like the impact on sewers. So there was no significant impact on sewers because of the incremental nature of this housing growth. Of course, that doesn't mean that sewers don't need updates today. They obviously do. We're very much aware of that. DP is very much aware of that, but this doesn't introduce a new pressure on the sewers. And so, but we're, again, working with all of the, you know, expert agencies in this inter-agency working group on a lot of this-
Well, I was told different. You would definitely have to have running water, correct?
Oh, yes, of course. Sorry. What I meant was not a new impact in the environmental impact statement. It's not that there wouldn't be new sewer hookups.
And the homeowner would be responsible for hooking up to the sewer, correct?
Um, I think we might have to follow up with, from the interagency, since DP would be the best suited to speak to that. They are working on those issues, but we could probably get more information.
You would have been mandated if you're renting out-
Yes, it would obviously have to be up to all sort of standards of having maintenance code, building code, like, it would have to have independent living facilities, like working bathroom, kitchen, independent in the accessory dwelling unit. You couldn't, for example, like, rent out a unit and then have the bathroom in your house. That would not be an accessory dwelling unit. It has to be a fully independent living facility.
So I'm going to wrap up on this, but you get where I'm going. There definitely needs to be thoughts around an amnesty program for residents. And when we talk about residents who would have to come into compliance, a large majority, I don't want to speak for everyone, many people rent out their basements to subsidize their mortgage. So these are not people who are sitting on unlimited cash, right? These are individuals who are renting it, obviously, to subsidize their mortgage, so they may not have the means to actually bring their basements up into compliance. And I was part of the first, the East New York rezoning, when I chaired the zoning committee in the council, where we- Where we did do the first pilot in East New York and Mayor Bill de Blasio put very little money into that program. I am encouraged that the. Current administration that's come, got four million dollars from the state, but relatively to bring a basement into compliance, it could cost. Upwards of three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, depending on where you're at. So that's technically a drop in the bucket. I guess the, the last question on this would be. Would this qualify if legalization went through? Would the city then be enabled to tap into federal infrastructure dollars? To help assist homeowners coming to compliance, this may be, be over, um, that may not be you. Obviously, the state has a program. But my big concern is, once again, enforcement being uneven in some communities. Sorry to say this, but we've been. To this rodeo before. Um, and I just want to make sure we're also protecting. Homeowners who have done everything to build this city, who are civil service workers, who are on fixed income, uh, to ensure that they're not. Being over enforced on eventually. Um, and then the last question is, you did say. In, in coastal zones, this would not be permitted, correct?
Yeah, so in the hundred-year floodplain, um, the subgrade residential space is already not allowed today. So it would continue to not be allowed. Um, so that would include accessory dwelling units. You could not build one in the hundred-year floodplain. In special coastal districts, you couldn't build any kind of accessory dwelling unit. Um, also part of this interagency working group. The, they might introduce rules, uh, they're working on recommendations for areas sensitive to flooding, either coastal or stormwater flooding. That are outside of those geographies. So those are the geographies that already exist in zoning and obviously it makes sense for zoning to continue to regulate in those geographies. Subgrade residential space or, you know, anything in special coastal districts. But there might be other areas, especially, uh, you brought up areas that aren't necessarily near the coast, but are sensitive to stormwater flooding. Uh, this working group is working on rules, especially at the mayor's office of climate and environmental justice, that would ensure that those, uh. Units are safe, um, and if they should be allowed in those areas at all. Those rules are outside of zoning. And are being developed right now, exactly where.
I really appreciate that statement because flooding impacts more than just coastal communities. So we would definitely be interested, and I know this will eventually get. To the council as well and certainly working to make sure, um, that, and I'm sure you're working with DEP, so they know many of the problematic areas here. We certainly had the map. We were out there yesterday in, in some of those communities. Um, so just getting, just want to make sure that. All right, I want to go into, um, transit deserts quick. Um, so if you can just pull up your map on, um, transit zones. And where would, um, transit, uh, your transit zones be?
So I'll, oops. Here we go. So here is the map of Queens. Here's the map of New York City. Um, I'll leave it on the map of Queens for a moment. So this geography, the greater transit, the greater transit zone, um, is an extension of our existing transit zone. And in the greater transit zone is defined as point five miles from any subway or rail station. So that includes Long Island Railroad. As well as, as the city subway system. It's a point five, uh, mile radius around the station. And then to be eligible within that geography for transit-oriented development, you not only have to be in those, those bubbles along the train. You also have to be obviously in an R1 to R5 zoning district because this is a low-density proposal. You have to be on a lot that's over five thousand square feet, and then you have to be on the short end of the block or on a wide street, which zoning defines as over seventy-five feet. Wide. So that's how that geography is. That's the applicability of the TOD.
So let me just go into, so define short-end block. Is that like one house end or, or what does that mean?
Less than two hundred and thirty feet from intersection to intersection.
So would you end up, and I just want you to put this on the record, would there be a building put in the middle of a single-family block? In the middle of a, a block? Is that permissible here?
Only if the, the mid-block, you know, let's, let's say a block longer than two hundred and thirty feet. You could only put, locate an apartment building if it is on the mid-block, if it's on a wide street. So a street that's over seventy-five feet wide. You have to meet one of those criteria over short end of the block or a wide street. Um, so if you're on a narrow street, a sixty-foot wide street, you know, like, and, you know, think of your typical residential street, and you're on the mid-block. You would not, that would not qualify for this proposal.
And then just go through the town squares again?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, town center zoning is a proposal that only applies where low-density districts. Are mapped with commercial overlays on top. So these areas nominally already allow. A low-density apartment building, but they have very restrictive zoning. They have extremely high parking requirements. They have low-floor area, uh, low FAR. Low height limits. And so it's not really feasible to build a mixed-use apartment building in these areas today, although you are nominally already allowed to do so. I mean, so what this means is a lot of these areas are left, they might have pre nineteen sixty-one buildings that have apartment buildings over commercial ground floors. But today, they're left with just a single-story taxpayer commercial space because you can't build that historic building type again today. So this just aims to re-legalize that, and it would allow the buildings to be three to five stories tall, including the commercial ground floor. Um, so first floor and then two to four stories of residential, depending on the underlying zoning district, um, and also the proximity to transit. A building can be larger if it's in that same greater transit oriented.
Now I have a, another question on this, and, and I understand MIH obviously would kick in if it was six stories and above, are correct?
Uh, well, MIH does, it, MIH applies to significant increase in residential density. These would not have affordability requirements. Um, in either of these proposals. We do hope that they would, uh, maybe participate in either, you know, forty-five X, the state tax incentive. Or it would allow room for an HPD affordability program to perhaps be taken advantage of. But there would not be an affordability requirement in the missing middle housing.
And that's what I'm getting at. I have deep concerns and I obviously am supportive of this, especially in town squares where we have a lot of blight. But I would be interested in knowing whether HPD is putting aside tax subsidy because one of the reasons. We do need to build is to address the affordability crises. But they hear there's no affordability option here, or, um, there's no mapping of where. And we are in, I mean, everywhere, people are challenged, right? You got students coming home from school, can't find affordability, want to stay in Queens, living in basements or their parents' basements. Perhaps, um, but I would be interested in knowing and hearing a lot more from HPD. On their willingness to also subsidize some units, um, being that this is low-density. And one of the things that we often get. Um, when you look at two to four-story buildings is market rate. And I'm not opposed to having some market rate. Um, across the borough, a diversity of incomes should certainly be applicable to. Um, housing across the borough, but. The number one thing we hear is we are priced out. So if landlords are doing two to four, you know, they may be charging three thousand a month. Um, for a studio perhaps or a one-bedroom here. Um, so I, I definitely would love to see HPD. Investing even in these two to four-story and not just. Being, you know, I hear the state program, but I can't, we can't speak for the state. We have to speak for the city.
Okay, I can, but, but so for, um, this, this proposal, uh. Yeah, you're, you're, there won't be affordability requirements, um, but for, these buildings are very affordable to build, uh, like low-rise apartment building. Compared to like an apartment building that's, you know, six stories or plus, you know, you're using a different kind of construction methodology. So these are more affordable to rent naturally or to purchase, um, than, than a higher-density form of construction. But I hear you on H, you want, uh, you know, HP's involvement. HPD has been, you know, obviously a close partner on this proposal, working on each of these. And advising on how their programs may interact. Um, and so they, you know, do think some of their programs will work with this housing typology. Including affordable homeownership, uh, programs that HPD has. HPD has a hard time using their affordable homeownership programs in high-density buildings. But they work quite well in this, uh, this, uh, typology, the low-rise apartment building with a few less units. Um, and so we do think this will be a great complement to HPD's programs, but obviously, uh, yeah, I hear your comment.
The question is, there's nothing definitive, correct?
I don't want to speak to HPD's, yeah, like commitments on, on funding, uh, missing middle housing specifically. We can try to follow up.
And I would agree with you, but I would disagree because look at what's happening in Astoria. Um, where there is lower density, two to four, and a lot of it is particularly just market rate and really expensive. Less expensive than other parts of the city, um, but definitely still expensive. Um, my last question, I just want to get to school seats, um, because there hasn't been any conversation. What is the coordination with the school? Construction authority on this plan as well? Are they at the table as well?
Yeah, so we conducted, as I mentioned, a full environmental impact statement, which assesses all of the various infrastructure impacts, including. Schools and early childhood, um, care. There was, the draft environmental impact statement did show. A impact on schools and early childcare in one type of neighborhood. One, uh. We've looked at neighborhoods in the environmental impact statement through a variety of categories, and it did reveal, uh, uh. A impact on schools, and so we are working closely with the school construction authority on mitigation measures.
Do you have those particular areas mapped now or community boards?
Um, it's, it's, so I have to get back to the specifics of the representative neighborhood that, uh, the typology, the representative neighborhood that was identified as having an impact. Um, they're put into various categories based on density and based on market, uh, so like a high-market or low-market area. Um, and so I can, I didn't send you the environmental impact statement, uh, information after this.
Yeah, I look forward to, to seeing those neighborhoods. I know them well. Um, and, um, I guess let's go back to parking and I'll end on that. So you would eliminate parking everywhere, you're saying, correct?
Parking would be optional for new housing everywhere. In existing parking would not necessarily be eliminated, um, existing parking. To remove it, you would have to pursue a discretionary action for the CPC, but for new construction of housing. Um, that would not include an affordability requirement. I'm sorry, parking requirement.
And that would just be a CPC action, and I have concerns with that. I think. A little bit more oversight, community boards, borough presidents, a lot more transparency around that. Um, and secondly, we can't, and, and once again, I was the chairman, I did ZQA. Um, MIH came through me when I was a chairman, um, but I think you can't use the one-size-fits-all approach here. Um, there are really parts of Queens that are transit deserts, and even if there is a train nearby like the LIR, where I live, um. You know, good luck getting there. You're gonna have to drive to get there because there's no bus that runs directly to it, although we are working. With the MTA on their current plan. So I am gonna be interested, even as we do our recommendations and making sure that. We're not treating every neighborhood like they have the best transportation because we don't. And we're gonna want to see these, some zones divided, um, because I can't treat parts of Eastern Queens and Southern Queens. Um, with the same broad stroke, I could, I could, um, perhaps, um, treat Jamaica with downtown Jamaica, being that the train is right there. Or, um, perhaps Long Island City or Astoria where there is a little bit more, um, much more. Um, uh, consistent transportation methods to get around. So, um, so we're gonna come back on that and I, you know, and I will let you know, we, we're not gonna just support that in broad strokes. Um, but we want to, we're gonna definitely want to see that discretionary action expanded a little bit.
Yeah, definitely hear that concern. And we totally acknowledge that, you know, transit access is not equally distributed throughout the entire city. There are many parts of New York City. In which cars are a fact of daily life to get around. Um, but what we've seen through, you know, development patterns of existing development, people that are. Uh, building housing far from transit are building above what is required today, sometimes twice, you know, double the existing parking requirement. And so that means that their developers aren't making a decision about how much parking to provide based on what the zoning says. They're making a decision about how much parking to provide based on what the market demands. And so we think it's better left up to the people who are providing housing to decide how much parking a site needs. Than to, for the zoning resolution to put a somewhat arbitrary, you know, like number on here's how many parking spaces you need to provide, but definitely hear your concerns about.
And I would have concerns leaving that optional, um, because we may get some people who just say we're doing none. Um, in parts of the borough who really do need more transportation investment. Um, with that being said, thank you so much for your testimony, um, this morning. There's no questions. This, this is a testifying. Uh, but I, I really want to thank, uh, city planning for the work that they have done on this. Without a doubt, we do have a housing shortage. Um, in Queens and in New York City, and we're facing that in this office every day when we have constituents coming in looking. Uh, for units of housing. I'm sure many other elected officials feel that, um, as well. Um, so this is the start of a conversation. Um, I do think that, uh, there's a lot more thought that needs to be put into certain pieces of this plan. Um, but we look forward to continuing the work to make sure that we can shape this in a way that. Um, will make, ensure that Queens certainly, um, is left better than we found it for future generations. But that being said, thank you for your testimony. Alrighty, so we're gonna start to go to the public, general public, but we do have elected officials, I think we're going to first. For testimony. And once again, we're gonna ask everybody to remain respectful. Everybody has two minutes. I do reserve the right to give you more time. Um, so we're gonna go to, I believe, uh, Assembly Member Ronstein first, and I think he's. Oh, Councilmember Ariola first, and she's on, oh, she's gonna get promoted.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you Borough President for doing this meeting and being the only Borough President that did do it. You are always ready to listen to the community, your community boards and your colleagues in government. Would like to again introduce myself. I'm Councilwoman Joanne Ariola, and I represent the thirty-second Council District in Queens. I'd like to go on the record and state that the city of yes housing opportunity as it stands now. Is absolutely detrimental to the many urban outer borough communities in this city. In a place as vibrant and diverse as New York City, taking a cookie-cutter approach. An application of zoning regulations could really be a recipe for disaster. I'd like to address the concerns for my district. The Rockaway Peninsula is already vastly overcrowded and in a flood zone. The infrastructure is already struggling under the weight of current population. And within, and with the closest trauma center far off in Jamaica, healthcare for communities were desperately needed to improve. And we are working on that. Pushing potentially thousands of new people into an area through accessory dwelling units. Or newly-zoned high-rise residential units would guarantee the floundering infrastructure collapsing outright. And the crowding of a few ways off the peninsula that would occur in an event of a natural emergency. That could be a nightmare. In Howard Beach, they have many of the same issues as the peninsula. It might be a bit closer to Jamaica Hospital, but it is still an area wholly unsuitable for high-rise. Residences due to the flood zone. During heavy storms, first responders already struggle to navigate the streets. And this problem would only be exacerbated and no doubt lead to fatalities. Further north in Ozone Park, Woodhaven and Glendale. We have seen an uptick in inland flooding that has already shown to overburden our sewer infrastructure. And has proven during Hurricane Ida, where lives were lost in basement apartment dwellings. Additionally, we see serious parking issues that raise significant questions about the wisdom of raising the density in those communities. To add to all of this, the city of yes legislation would effectively deny communities, their representatives, any input. Currently, the city council. Representatives are, are able to protect their communities by using zoning changes.
Member, I think we lost, oh.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was, I was muted again. So I'm just, I, I will close with saying that, that the, that this proposal will take away the right for ULP. Process where community boards can weigh in and the city council to be able to vote. And, and discuss the proposals with the constituents and colleagues to explain why a change should or should not go through. And for those reasons, I find it completely unacceptable, and that's why I'm so firmly against. The city of yes housing opportunity as it stands. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Ariola. Uh, we will now go to Councilmember Holden.
Good morning. You hear me? I don't know why my camera's not on. Good morning. Uh, thank you Borough President for doing this. Uh, it's a very important hearing. Uh, I'm Councilmember Robert Holden and, uh, of the thirtieth Council District. Uh, I represent Maspath, Middle Village, Ridgewood, Glendale, Regal Park and Elmhurst. I strongly oppose the city of, uh, yes housing opportunity. It's, I, I think it's a slap in the face to our, uh, Queens communities. Uh, you know, I could also call it the city of BS. It really is. It, it threatens to remove the power of our local, uh, elected officials. The council members like myself to negotiate zoning. We are elected to represent our constituents. The plan gives developers a chance to upzone the city, saving them money and time. But at a great cost to our commu, local communities. There's no real commitment to improving our infrastructure. You know, including sewer systems, electric grids, parking, schools and emergency services. By the way, at hearings, DEP and OEM, uh, said, told me at hearings that they were not involved in drafting the city of yes. So, uh, and also this hearing Borough President is scheduled on a workday, you know, a lot of people couldn't attend. But Queens Community Boards, as you know, and.
So I'm gonna correct you there, Councilmember Holden. Does the city council hold hearings on a weekend?
I've been critical of them too. I said.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna correct you on that. Thank you.
Well, it is, is this not a workday? All right, so let's go beyond the Queens.
Does the city council hold hearings on weekends?
I don't control, I don't control that.
We, we have, we have to follow the same rules and regulations. Thank you.
All right. But you know that Queens Community Boards and civic associations have overwhelmingly rejected this proposal, so i- i- you know, it's, it seems like, you know, I always get the feeling at the, at some of these, um, hearings like we have in the city council that the, you know, the government has already made up their mind. So, um, I think it's going back to the, the issues, I think it's a blank check for developers, uh, and, uh, you know, we're gonna be crossing our fingers that they'll create affordable housing. It's not really a viable solution to our housing crisis. My district, by the way, has horrible flooding, even after moderate thunderstorms. This is gonna only make things worse. And you know, and currently, by the way, as the Borough President knows, the stormwater runoff from my district and other districts around, uh, Newtown Creek further pollutes the creek, so it, it's gonna be a vicious cycle. And by the way, my electrical grid in my di- in, in this district is one of the worst in the city. We lead the city in blackout, so uh, this is only gonna make all those things worse. And when I brought this up at hearings, uh, to the D E P Commissioner, he just said, well, we need housing. I said, what about the flooding? That's, this is gonna actually pave over more uh, and and have more runoff because it's gonna be less grass. You're gonna, you're gonna be able to pave over the backyard, build a, build a house back there, uh, put people in the basement as, as, uh, Councilwoman Ariola said, we have people dying in our, in the basements, uh, in a, in a few storms, so this is not a viable solution. And so I, I totally reject the, the city of yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your testimony, Councilmember Holden. Please, no, no outbursts, please. I'm doing that today. Thank you. Alrighty, um, we're gonna now go to, uh, do we have any other electeds? I think Councilmember Ang's chief of staff may be on. You're right. Um, so we're now gonna go to Paul, uh, Chair C B eleven. Paul Devenette, but I always mess your last name up.
Devenedetto. It's very phonetic. I don't mind one bit. Thank you so much, and thank you for having us today. I've, I've heard city of yes three different times. It is, you know, there's three parts. The first part, community board, I am the chair of community board eleven Queens. Uh, the first part, uh, carbon neutrality, we passed flying colors. The second part was very difficult economic because a lot of zoning was in it. People just have the problem in eastern Queens where we live, people have a problem with the zoning portion of, of city of yes. It's an omnibus kind of bill. You said it yourself. There were so many pieces that you didn't, didn't jive with because they didn't work for, for some of our communities. It's really, it's offensive in a way that city of, that, that D C P would bring this such a huge thing. We had, I think the first economic opportunity was fourteen hundred pages and, and this current part three, uh, housing opportunity is fifteen or sixteen hundred pages. And they, they come and give you a twenty-minute presentation at the community board and expect you to understand what's going on here. And, but we know, we, we've, we've fought back this kind of rezoning multiple times. Uh, it happened in the city council with, uh, Speaker Johnson. It happened at the state twice with, with Gov- Governor Hokel, A D Us. Uh, this is the hardest part of all because, um, I mean, I have so many things to say and I, and two minutes doesn't really do it, but I, I'll just run through it as quickly as I possibly can. Um, so city of yes is obviously about dismantling the low-density zoning and deregulating and upzoning it by various means. What we're, what we're seeing here today is a national movement to make cities less low-density based. I say that specifically. Uh, it makes sense. If you look at Minneapolis, it's seventy percent single fam- or it was in twenty nineteen, seventy percent single family. L A is seventy-five percent single family. Uh, Washington D C, pretty good, thirty-six percent. New York City is fifteen percent single-family zoning. And the whole point of, of, of the article that came out in the New York Times twenty nineteen was to show that New York is a good model for it. Our current zoning, the nineteen sixty-one rezoning, which was built for, by D C P's own standard and their own literature, sixteen to twenty million people nineteen sixty-one, they created the zoning so we can grow to sixteen to twenty million. That didn't happen. We have eight million and we're dropping. We've dropped since twenty twenty, we, we've dropped population. Now, I know that we have a housing affordability crisis and, and I'll be the first to admit it. This doesn't address it. What it does, let's get specifics, the T O D, the Transit Oriented Development, the Bayside Train Station where I live by. I live in a neighborhood, a de-restricted neighborhood of nineteen, houses built in nineteen twenties. My neighborhood is filled with people from all around the world, just like Queens. It's not exclusive. I don't have to say it, it's not exclusive Caucasian. It's, it's Asian American, it's African American, and all of eastern Queens is like that. I'm just gonna speak for eastern Queens, okay? Has that same thing, and I will, I will finish, yes. So there's so many problems with this. The T O D zone would take every corner on, on my block, okay? Every corner would have, would have a, a multifamily apartment building in it. It's only, it's only single houses right now, okay? And why should, we only have fifteen percent single family. Why do we have to crush that? Why can't they do this without attacking our eastern Queens neighborhoods? My last point, because I know there's a time limit, I went to the, uh, uh, was supposed to be an informational meeting, it turned into a rally in Cambria Heights. There were nearly a thousand people in the library there. It was an amazing day to see how many people, okay? And an exclusively African-American community, which have, o- over time have acquired single-family housing, okay? Moving from places in Brooklyn, places in Manhattan, in the fifties and sixties, when, 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 when it was all changing, buying houses, finally having a piece of the American dream. This takes that away from those people. It takes it away from me. It takes it away from people all across eastern Queens. Twelve, twelve of fourteen is it, or ten of twelve community boards, y- your, your folks, you know, like me, voted against this. We didn't vote against it because we're blind or because we're ignorant. We voted against it because we know it takes away our way of life. And it's open to everybody, so please, I think you need to go even harder than, than, and your comments were very good, but I think you need to look really closely and listen to the people like myself, the community board chairs who have all told you, and the community boards that this doesn't work for us. Please, let's, let's say no for now.
Right, and I'm not, I don't wanna discredit people for showing up to that meeting in Cambria Heights. I live up the block. People showed up because they thought they were gonna have a shelter in their community, but that's another story. I've delved into the other stuff.
True, yeah.
Um, but, um, and I live up the block. My son literally is up the block.
And you have the most single family of any, any area in Queens.
So we, we definitely share that. Let me ask you a question on that too, though.
Yes.
Um, on the T O Ds, so Bell Boulevard with there being issue in your opinion and developing two to four stories above perhaps Martha's Bakery. So if you got rid of the T O D stuff and limited to the Boulevard, would that be a problem for you?
I, I can address that directly, easily. Bell Boulevard and Northern Boulevard where they cross, okay? Northern Boulevard is R six B. There was a restaurant called Pier Twenty-five A. It was there for years. It was a two-story, one and a half-story building. And it, and it went out of business, it sat there forever, and then someone realized, oh my goodness, this is R six B. They're currently building a seven-story apartment building there. Whether I like that or not, our current zoning supports that. Bell Boulevard is also, I believe it's also zoned, uh.
R six B.
Yeah, so this, we have so much room to grow, uh, our housing.
You're saying on the Boulevard it would happen anyway, correct?
I, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly, okay, Bell Boulevard, but you can investigate it certainly in, in my neighborhood, but I live four blocks away from that. My neighborhood is, it's a little piece of, of, of love, of green space. It will be destroyed by this, as will all those neigh- all those blocks in Cambria Heights. When I spoke to those people, they were so upset about it. And we feel like we're being abandoned by our elected, so please, sir, do your best and work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, now I'm going to Councilmember Palladino. Sorry, Vicky, it was my fault. She's on virtually.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and, uh, I too want to, uh, say thank you to you Borough President uh, for hosting, uh, this and being the only Borough President to do so. Uh, you are hearing the people, I, I, I have to say. You've mentioned, uh, northeast Queens, you've mentioned southern Queens. Uh, we have a lot in common as far as single-family dwelling. But let me talk about District nineteen. By the way, I'm Vicky Palladino, Councilmember representing District nineteen, which is northeast Queens, which goes west College Point as far east as Little Neck, Douglasston. And the entire one-half of my district consists of the Long Island Sound. Uh, I want to say this, that right now, my community, uh, the infrastructure, the multifamily dwellings that we already have pre-existing, we discussed, as you, uh, uh, we discussed earlier about the illegal basements that's rampant here. What has become a major concern for us is, uh, the allowing of these little cottages or this making, uh, garages into, uh, dwellings, people to live in. Uh, that is going to be a tremendous problem. It's a problem already. Uh, we recently had a house sell right near my office, and everybody who came to see this house asked if they had a bathroom and or a kitchen or both in the pre-existing garage. Now, we here in District nineteen have already put up four thousand five hundred and two units have been added. Three thousand four hundred of those units were affordable. Two hundred and thirty-four of them were senior affordable. Now, we also are going to go to, uh, the fact that the parking mandate issue is an absolute disaster. You brought that up, uh, Borough President, when you said, uh, about how you're gonna build a building and they're not going to be allowed to allow for cars. And the person who represented the city said that, uh, when they build a new building, it's not necessary to put in parking. Well, that's a fallacy. That's false. Because for every new building that goes up, a certain amount of parking must be allowed. Uh, I'm going to now skip because I know my time is somewhat limited here. Uh, when we talk about the half-mile radius that goes around, uh, for us here, it's the Long Island Railroad. We have three, we have Murray Hill, we have Broadway, we have Bayside. When you do the circumference, as I have done, and you branch out a half a mile from each of these uh, train stations, you will find that it does indeed impede upon single-family dwelling. And if this does go into effect, as, uh, Paul just brought up, and I think you did too, uh, Borough President, about allowing, uh, these apartment buildings to exist in what is now just an R one zone because it's two hundred and fifty feet in or something to that effect. Uh, I have to say that with the infrastructure that we currently have, and to piggyback on Bob Holden and to piggyback on Ariola, let me just say this, that we will not, this is, that, we need our cars here. And this is going to make it, it, it won't, it just won't be possible. Let's just sum it up. The city of yes housing opportunity, as you stated, is not a one-size-fits-all. It definitely is not. There are certain areas in this borough of Queens, as you said also, that you'd like to see maintained for its historic value as well as to suit the people who live there. So let me just say thank you for doing this meeting. There's many more to come. Uh, I don't want this rushed through like a freight train. Uh, as you said, uh, I, and I agree completely, that we must think about what we're doing before we act. We are not ready yet between infrastructure and grid and everything else. We are not prepared to put forward such an aggressive housing, uh, opportunity at this moment. We simply are not. This really needs to go on a shelf. It really needs to be thought about in a lot more detail uh, before city council gets it on the floor, and this should pass the way they pass the economic development, the part two.
Thank you, Council, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
All right, thank you, uh, Borough President, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now gonna go to Samir, uh, Lavingia. L A V I N G I. Did I say that right?
Uh, close enough.
All right, got it.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you Borough President Richards and his team for the opportunity to testify in favor of the city of yes for housing opportunity zoning text amendment. My name is Samir Lavingia, and I serve as the campaign coordinator at Open New York. Open New York is an independent grassroots pro-housing nonprofit with twelve chapters across the state, including ones in Queens, with more than over six hundred active volunteer members. New York faces a severe housing shortage. The February New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey revealed that the rental vacancy rate has fallen to one point four percent, the lowest since nineteen sixty-eight. New Yorkers are feeling the pressure. Evictions have increased, asking rents have skyrocketed, and newly issued building permits have plummeted. The city of yes for housing opportunity offers a once-in-a-generation chance to begin to reverse these trends. For far too long, many of the most well-resourced parts of the city have been de facto off-limits to new residents, especially New Yorkers who need affordable housing. In twenty twenty-three, ten New York City community districts, including community districts one and two in Queens, produced as much housing as the remaining forty-nine community districts combined. This form of inequitable development simply cannot continue if we want the city to work for everyone who lives here. City of yes is critical for Queens because it asks neighborhoods to add a little more housing. Together, a little more housing in every neighborhood means a lot more housing opportunities for all New Yorkers. A lot more small apartment buildings with homes for young families, a lot more income-restricted workforce housing, and a lot more backyard cottages that provide critical revenue for struggling homeowners. There's been considerable misinformation spread about city of yes in the press and at many community board meetings that our members have attended. The zoning changes will not destroy neighborhoods. They are smart, relatively minor changes that are far less dramatic than zoning changes already implemented in other states such as California, Washington, Oregon, Montana, Ohio, and just last week in Massachusetts. The proposal to allow one- and two-family homeowners to add an extra apartment to their home, also known as A D Us, as we talked about previously, is a common sense change that has been, uh, embraced by homeowners and communities across the countries, country. A D Us are a critical pillar of A A R P's nationwide housing framework for a good reason. They make it easier for older New Yorkers to age and place indignity with the close support of nearby family members. Without the A D U portion of city of yes, it's predicted that many neighborhood, neighborhoods in Queens will create almost zero new housing over the next fifteen years. It's ne- simply unacceptable that in our severe housing crisis, uh, where so many New Yorkers, including fifty-two percent of Queens renters, are rent burdened every month. Every New Yorker deserves the opportunity to stay in their community or find a home in the city where they don't just survive, but thrive for years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Testimony. Alright, we're now gonna go to Alicia Spears, uh, Cambria Heights.
My name is Alicia Spears. I am from Cambria Heights. And I'm a homeowner of Cambria Heights and Cambria Heights area. My parents are in Queens Village, and my cousins are in St. Albans. All of us are totally against the city of yes. We are against one- and two-family homes, communities being wiped out. We choose these areas for a reason, without builders and not because of all us being unsympathetic to the housing issues. Developers are going for the four eighty-five X and tax incentive incentive, and no inspectors will be unable, the inspectors will be unable to stop them once these mass white development starts. Non-compliant, building code violations, they don't care, laws, rules will simply pay fines and go about their business. This is about, it's not about affordable housing. This is about a money and land grab. No hospitals, no schools, overcrowded schools, no supermarkets, neglected roads, sewers, trees, all the above, filthy streets, but y'all want to throw buildings on top of that. Our community is hanging on by a thread, being asked to sacrifice the most and given the less. Yet y'all say we must do our part. I am sick of all of you, unprofessional, disrespectful, the ego trips, corruption, lying and fighting, power hungry, nasty abrasive attitudes, retaliation, fraud, bribes, Zoom, Zoom meetings, B S, no websites, wrong phone numbers, last-minute public meeting notices, numbers that don't work for passwords, codes, public meetings, all at the expense of hard-working homeowners and at the expense of Queens. We, like I said, don't take this personal, Richard Donovan or anybody in this room or any council member. I am, I'm just reading as I put it here, and my feelings at that time. Please don't take it personal. If it don't shoe don't fit, don't wear it.
I'm not taking it.
Okay.
You have the right to say.
You, don't wear it. We hired you, Eric Adams, Donna Richards, Natasha Williams, Leroy Conry, five of them to represent us. Not completely disrespect us and go against our wishes. Those boroughs that want that, let them opt in and get it. No problem with that. But don't get angry and mad at us. We don't want to do that, okay? And don't complain to us when you're due opting to do that. Those old areas like the Bronx and the Manhattan, I heard they want to do this, no problem with that. But those areas that don't, please don't impress it on us. We say no to the city of yes, all of it.
Thank you for your testimony, and that's the beauty of democracy, as you. Thank you for your testimony. And that's the beauty of democracy is you get to say what you wanna say. And if the shoe don't fit, don't wear it. Right. All right, we're gonna go to Alex Armelovich from Jackson Heights.
Hi, my name is Alex Armelovich. Uh, I'm a co-op owner in the Jackson Heights Historic District. I'm also the Housing Policy Research Manager at the Miss Canon Center, uh Public Interest Think Tank. And uh I, I, I wanted to, uh, to, to speak about uh the, the, the City of Yes and the uh important role that it plays in relegalizing historic pre-war uh vernacular style buildings uh in New York City. So uh that it, it, it's actually interesting that the, the classic uh New York City building is that the six-story walk-up. The kind of like uh, you know, nineteen nineteen forty-four multiple dwellings law model building. And uh the, the town center and TOD uh rezonings will allow three to five-story buildings, but it's still gonna fall short of that six-story historic walk-up. I know in, on uh the, the shopping district that I, that I live on, uh thirty, Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Jackson Heights, you know, there's uh retail on the ground floor and then, and then five stories of apartments above it. This, this won't allow uh buildings even quite as large as that. And then um, of course, on the, on the, on the ADU front, I think it's valuable for homeowners to have the option to build ADUs. Nobody should ever be forced to build an ADU, but I also feel that homeowners shouldn't be banned from doing so on their own, you know, on their own land, on their own structure, um uh that it, it should be the, the right of the homeowner to decide. And of course, the city should, you know, continue to maintain safety rules in the building code. But um the decision about whether or not to, to build a safe ADU, I think should, should be left to the, the discretion of the homeowner. I, I also wanted to note that from a national perspective, just last week, Columbus, Ohio passed a citywide upzoning. It's going to allow twelve stories near downtown, seven stories on commercial areas, and um four to five stories on their Bus Rapid Transit network. So they, they don't have a rail system, but they do have buses. And uh Columbus, Ohio is doing a citywide upzoning that's much, much bigger than this. And uh, and I do believe that New York City has the civil, uh, the civil infrastructure and the subway system to handle it. Um, thank you so much.
No, we wanna respect everybody's opinion. That's the beauty of democracy. So let's not laugh, have outbursts. Let's just respect everybody's opinion. You can have your opinion. We're gonna go to Raphael Schweitzer.
Testing. Good morning, everyone. My name is Raphael Schweitzer. I'm a, a resident of Brooklyn, a lifelong resident of the Bronx, ten-year community civic leader. I have family in Rego Park, Queens. And this, the way this City of Yes has been gone about is a total insult to democracy. The way that community boards continually, even if other you look matters, community boards continually vote down big development projects and then it goes through anyway. So what's really the purpose of community boards? Before I go into, um, I think the city charter needs a whole revolution. And we need to empower community boards to actually have power over land use matters like this. So currently, community board isn't, and has an advisory role, which means that when a big project comes through, twelve, fourteen-story building, community board can't stop it. They could, they could give guidance. Same thing with this. And I think the Borough President should have the power to stop big projects too. So I think for the city charter, if community boards voted down and the Borough President votes it down, the project should be dead. And for this massive project, this is, this is a total insult. We, we're talking about housing gonna be built. Who's gonna be building the housing? Is it gonna be benevolent, um, kind, you know, people? Not in it for profit. No, it's gonna be developers. It's gonna be private. It's gonna be for profit. I get it. Now, there's gonna be affordability. Income requirements, but like, it's still gonna be with AMI, which is, there's a big issue, A, all the area metering income is not, doesn't reflect affordability. And I wanted to point out that, uh, did you notice that all of those who testified today for the City of Yes are paid employees of the real estate industry and nonprofits, while all who are against are here civic volunteers and here to save their neighborhoods? So, you know, when you say, oh, I'm, yeah, well, I'm with uh Open New York. Yeah, okay. Well, you're being paid to be here. Sorry. So I think this is a massive, one of three massive upzonings, and this is not a democracy the way this is being done. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Name? Representative Ed Bronstein. And if you could just state your name for the record when you testify.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we hear you.
Uh, so we have a statement prepared uh on behalf of Assemblyman Bronstein. You just pull it up.
Make your name for the record as well.
My name's Jess Muller and I'm from Assemblyman Bronstein's office, and this is our statement. I thank Queens Borough President Richards for holding today's hearing to solicit critical community feedback on the mayor's City of Yes housing proposal. Over the last several months, countless northeast Queens residents have reached out to my office with serious concerns about the proposal, and I share these concerns. In short, the City of Yes is a one-size-fits-all proposal that doesn't consider the strain on services and infrastructure and increase in housing would have on local communities. Further, many of the constituents I represent choose to live in northeast Queens because of its low-density character, which includes green space, trees, and low congestion, and this proposal would drastically reduce these qualities. This is why each of the community boards in my assembly district, seven, eleven, and thirteen overwhelmingly rejected the City of Yes proposal in a board vote. Many northeast Queens civic associations have also spoken out in opposition. There is no doubt that New York State is in need of more affordable housing. That is why in this year's state budget, the legislature established a tax incentive for the construction of new multiple dwellings that include affordable units. They established property tax exemptions to convert underutilized office space in New York City to permanent affordable housing. The state also invested one hundred and fifty million for the New York housing of the future to subsidize construction of cooperative rental and cooperative homeownership, one hundred percent affordable housing. The City of Yes proposal we are discussing today does not include any affordable, any affordability requirements. The transit-oriented development and accessory dwelling unit tenants of City of Yes were already put forth within Governor Hochul's own proposal, the Housing Compact in twenty twenty-three. In the final budget, the Assembly rejected the inclusion of the one-size-fits-all Housing Compact, and it was ultimately removed. With another one-size-fits-all plan being put forward by the mayor, I encourage my colleagues in city government to reject the similar proposal and work instead to achieve a long-term plan that will increase housing stock while engaging each neighborhood in a comprehensive zoning conversation.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will move on to Betty Bratton, uh, Community Board Ten. She's on virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Borough President. Um, my name is Betty Brayton, and I'm the Chairperson of Queens Community Board Ten. We thank you for this opportunity to provide the views of Community Board Ten to you regarding the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. This citywide text amendment that's currently under view, under review is certainly regarded unfavorable in our district. We thank you also for the reach out by members of your staff in recent weeks to gather input about our board's position on this City of Yes proposal. The statement of Community Board Ten was submitted to the City Planning Commission at its hearing on July tenth, and it details how and why CB ten voted an unfavorable recommendation on this proposal. So I'm not gonna take up your time reiterating all of that. We have provided that to your office and we will again be providing it uh today as written test, as part of our written testimony. We thank you for your consideration of our views and strongly urge you to support them. As in most parts of Queens, the residents of CB ten do not support this text amendment. Within Community Board Ten, our residents believe that the proposals put forth by the City of Yes are far too broad and do not adequately address the uniqueness of all the many communities in our city and particularly in our borough. CB ten is one of the districts in the city with among the highest rates of single and two-family owner occupied homes, and it is the most racially diverse community board district in the city, according to data put forth by the Furman Center. Our residents, no matter who they are or in which of the many communities in our district that they live in, they've invested in those communities and they do not desire to see the essential character of those communities altered. Our residents all across our seriously altered. They believe this proposal does not provide adequate pathways for them to participate in processes to review future development. This city and our borough are not, as other speakers have said, one-size-fits-all. The residents of the communities here in Queens, by and large, are expressing that they wish to play a role in the development proposal for future development in their neighborhoods. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present our views to you. We urge you to support them. Increased housing density is a concern all throughout our district. But there are some very specific issues within our coastal area that this proposal's transit and town square zoning will exacerbate negatively. I'm particularly referring to our Howard Beach Coastal Zone. And in our written statement, you will see comment that basically says in the days post Sandy, every single proposal studied. Everything that has come out from governmental sources and from think tank types of sources has said that in that region, there should be limits on density. What this proposal's town square and transit-oriented development will do is add density. It's particularly important that we say it in our statement and we would urge you to support certainly that portion. Census Act eight eighty-four needs to be excluded entirely from any of the proposals that it would allow the transit-oriented development or the town square development.
Thank you, Betty. Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna ask you to wrap up, and I think City Planner did acknowledge that in their testimony, so we'll we'll look forward to continuing to work with them, um, definitely on coastal communities and neighborhoods impacted. But I think they did acknowledge that.
Again, thank you, Mr. Borough President. Thank you for being the only Borough President to allow the voices of your communities to speak. Thank you, and we will be submitting everything that we have in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Sylvia Hack, CB nine. Hi Sylvia.
I think, as you know, Community Board Nine voted unanimously against the City of Yes. And I have to say that somebody has called it the City of Mess, which is a better description. You cannot do what you did in nineteen sixty-one when you imposed zoning on the whole city under the, that so-called new zoning for uh nineteen sixty-one. It took years to undo a mess that was created by the city. And we have real communities in Queens. It's not anybody's job to go around figuring out how do we destroy communities in order to come up with maybe some affordable housing? When Long Island City was rezoned so that there would be housing, so it was for high-density housing. But what we wound up with was very expensive housing, which now has a vacancy rate of over thirty percent. And it's not because there aren't apartments available. The issue is affordability. So Community Board Nine, as I've said, has voted against this, which is basically an opportunity for the real estate industry to destroy as much as it can and grab as much as it can as it did when on the Upper East Side, we lost lots of buildings, small buildings which housed people in affordable housing, which were replaced by towers, which cost multi-millions of dollars to purchase. I particularly like the one that had a four-story uh studio, studio within the building. So we ask you to please cast your vote as a no vote because it is not that opportunity is not the, the right of the people who we pay to see the destruction of good communities that live within the city, within the communities of Queens.
Thank you for your testimony. I gotta correct you. Long Island City does not have a thirty percent vacancy rate. We've been hearing that for a while.
Long Island City.
Long Island.
Long Island City, that's an over thirty percent.
They do not have an over thirty percent vacancy.
Manhattan, of course, we know what that is.
Right, okay. Just correcting LIC does not have a thirty percent vacancy rate. Um, we're gonna go to Richard Rogers. Maybe on the commercial front, they're struggling, but not the residential.
Good afternoon. I think we're in the afternoon. Nope, we're still in the morning. My name is Richard Rogers. I live in Fresh Meadows and my wife, Yuzen, who I just took to the airport one night ago, and she's in China now. These changes in zoning laws have never been proposed on this scale before. The proposal links, I have to say this carefully, uh, those elected politicians with the real estate industry. The plan, the plan allows for real estate industry introducing market rates, pardon me, market rates. And finally, parking has to be considered in creating new buildings. Thank you for this opportunity, Borough President Richards.
Thank you for your testimony. We're now gonna go to Brandon Castro. Hey, Don, Brandon.
Anybody hear me? Okay, perfect. I just wanna say thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I think it's very important that multiple sides get heard. I'm, my name is Brandon Castro. I'm a candidate for State Assembly District thirty here in Queens, and I want to echo a lot of the criticisms that was being brought forward today. I want to bring up a particular problem, which is the strain on the resources that I think is gonna be huge. My area, which is, so my district covers Woodside, Masbit, and Elmhurst. Woodside, Masbit in particular have been devastated by flooding in like, in, in the last few years. And my entire basement got flooded, my whole block got flooded, much of Woodside, Masbit, much of the business owners there devastated too. I had to manually clean out the floods until three AM and that happened, I think, twice more. And I see this as a very, very big problem because I don't think that this is going to address that. I think this is going to make things worse. I think that uh for those areas that want to do that, go right ahead, but I think forcing our homeowners, forcing some of the business owners to adapt to this, I think is wrong. I think that uh there's a lot of other problems too. Parking has always been a big problem. It's not only here, but in much of the other areas of Queens, such as Astoria, Woodside's always had that problem, Jackson Heights. That list can go on and on and on, and I think that that's being ignored. I think that the one-size-fits-all approach is wrong. I think that uh we need to review this over. We're not ready yet. Affordable housing is a problem. The affordability crisis is, is real. Both sides can agree on that. But I do think that we need to adjust a lot of things. We need to uh take into account the areas like Woodside, Masbit, where much of the business owners there, you know, they're not, they're not quite adjusted to deal with a lot of the impacts or to deal with like the flooding, to deal with a lot of those things that are gonna be ongoing and it's only gonna get worse from here. I don't think we have enough resources, money, or time to really deal with this. Well, I appreciate you for hearing me out and thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your testimony. Evie Boyd, Rosedale Civic Association President. From my neck of the woods.
Good morning, uh Borough President Richards. Good morning, everyone. Yes, my name is Evie Boyd. I am the current president of the Rosedale Civic Association. I am a homeowner. I have been residing in Rosedale for about thirty years. I'm also a retiree. I'm a civil servant, a civil servant. I served the City of New York for over thirty years. I am currently still serving my community in the city as president of the Rosedale Civic. I just wanted to say that the presentation that we heard today from the presenter and the uh prior presentations that I've heard, since this was rolled out at the ear- earlier part of the year, this plan that they came up with, nothing that I've heard then or that I've heard now makes this plan a good one. People do not belong in garages. People do not belong in backyards. They belong in homes. These are the homes that we bought into in our neighborhood. And I just, and I And I just, and I just wanna add also, let me just read this soon, that the City of Yes specifically designed to, is specifically designed to eliminate middle-class homeowner neighborhoods and those like us in Rosedale and those like us throughout Southeast Queens and beyond, allowing market rate rental apartment buildings through town center and transit-oriented zone, transit-oriented, oriented development zone and chases accessory dwellings, units, massive increase in basic density through the destruction of our zoning regulations and the elimination of on-site parking. These proposals are unacceptable. We bought into a neighborhood because of the character and because of the, the feel of our suburban life, and that's what we wanna maintain. We don't want the city to take that away from us. You mentioned in Rosedale, we have issues already with flooding. And thankfully, you know, finally, after fifty years, we've been waiting so long for this to be addressed, and thank you for addressing this, supporting the funding that you put in to make this happen. And we definitely do not have the, the infrastructure that can keep what the city is planning in Rosedale. That will not be something suitable for our community. And you asked some very important questions about those developments, and I agree with you, there needs to be more questions and more tweaking on this, and we're waiting your response on this. Thank you very much.
Let me ask you a question too. So, we've got a lot of interest in fixing town, the Rosedale in town, right? And there has been interest in making some improvements. And I've heard a lot about how the town square proposal and, of course, we can have question marks around the parking, we all know the L I double R, we still gotta drive to get there. But when you look at what Reverend Flake did on Merrick Boulevard, I've heard a lot of Southeast Queens people say that it's gonna ruin the neighborhood. Reverend Flake revived, would you agree that Reverend Flake's development revitalized the neighborhood? And would you also agree that some of the blight on Merrick Boulevard in Rosedale? Like, how do we fix it, right? Where we live, right? We have to drive by that every day. So there is a level of truth in some of this, and once again, we can, there are parts of the planet I can agree with, parts that I don't agree with, but I think one thing that I'm most concerned about with some of the rhetoric I've heard, and not just Southeast Queens, is that we do have boulevards that are struggling with blighted Walgreens that perhaps they were, right, I'm sorry, but what we have Walgreens too, RiteAid, Walgreens, CVSs near us that have been blighted. And this proposal could trigger some economic opportunity to fix some of that blight, because you're giving people a tool. So I just would wanna hear a little bit more about how do, what do we do to fix what we have to pass every morning? And, and I'm trying to come up with strategies, you know, we can call landlords, but they really have no incentive. And I don't wanna, everybody's talking about Brigger Real Estate, you know, a lot of the landlords are small owners, that's why a lot of their sites are blighted. So, I just wanna hear a little bit more, and I want us to all think about that a little bit more. Every town square is not the same, but there certainly are some parts of the borough, including on Linden Boulevard, that are struggling, and we have to figure out a way how to navigate keeping our young people here, but also how to ensure that we can produce some economic opportunity to get rid of the blight in our neighborhood.
Well, I can only speak about Rosedale. We have a very small town square and our, our infrastructure is not built to maintain the kind of building that they wanna do. We don't have that kind of structure that can maintain what, you know, these additional units, they're talking about apartment buildings where there was, where there's not the infrastructure to support it. And that is, you know, and we support other neighborhoods that feel the same way. They don't see how this is gonna be maintained in their neighborhoods either. So we support, you know, if it's gonna happen in Southeast Queens, if it's gonna happen in North Queens or East Queens, you know, we're, we're standing together with all those civics and all your constituents on this. So we're asking that you do, don't support City of Yes. Please take another look at this. There is a lot more work that has to be done. There is a housing shortage, but this is not the right idea. This is not how we fix it.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go to Marilyn Flax. Did you sign, you have a sheet, 'cause I wanted to last, so did you sign up? You signed up not to speak. Okay, so, oh, so you're good, all right. Oh, wait, so why do we have, oh, oh, okay, I see what you're saying, so you're Marilyn. Okay, so this is the speak when you sign, okay. Okay, all righty, all right. Irana Vashia, Vashia, registered online. Oh, no, you're here, okay.
I represent a new organization that is called D O N, Don, which is defending our neighborhood. Today, we, we are in dire situation, we say no to the City of Yes. Say yes to the city is an attempt to resolve the housing crisis without understanding the source of the problem. In fact, the population of New York grew up very little in the last thirty years. I checked it yesterday with my husband, the scientist. And unlike this person who said that, oh, there is population, no. In the last thirty years, the, the population didn't grow and New York lost during these four years, more than half a million people. Fact number two, there are many houses and apartments that are staying empty in New York City. Next, housing crisis source is not a lack of affordable housing, but a deterioration of the regional economy. There are three real problems that make it difficult for people to settle in New York and to find houses. One, enormous taxes, one of the highest in the USA. Second, inflation and fast and growing cost of living. Three, unreasonably high mortgage rates and required down, down payment. The government can, and you can solve this problem, but people will continue living in New York as if these problems are not solved. The attractiveness of New York City as a residential place is largely driven by the variety of living options from high-density to low-density areas. People can choose based on their lifestyles and their family composition. Reshaping the city will not solve the immediate housing crisis and will only lead the city to the city of, to the city deterioration. You cannot cheat the real market by an artificial government interaction. Somebody will have to pay for all these and have a heavy price. And this is somebody is as usual, middle-class working people, many of whom are already living in New York for this reason. Okay, rather than destroying the city economy completely, the government should consider the proper ways to resolve the housing crisis. I'm, I live in New York, I live in Fort Hills.
I got a hundred people online, I gotta get to.
Yeah, I'm finishing. If, if the, if this, this entity decides yes to the city, you will destroy our neighborhood. And this is absolutely wrong, and this is just, okay, it will cause terrible, terrible disaster for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Karina Nieves, then we're moving to online.
Thank you Sylvia for your testimony, by the way. She, she's a, a great community member for Kew Gardens in Richmond Hill. My name is Karina Nieves. I came here as a resident, not tied to anything. I was gonna do an online thing, but I figured I'd come in person. So, I mean, I'm against the City of Yes, but it seems like it's gonna be a yes from a lot of people, but I think there should be a lot of tie-ins to fix. And I agree that we do have a lot of CVSs and Walgreens and all these other places that are losing business. I mean, if you look on Union Turnpike, there's some businesses that are, are completely shuttered, Jamaica Avenue completely shuttered businesses, so I think we need to, we need help there. I really think that it's not every, it's not a one, our city's not a one-size-fits-all. I think we need to, this needs to go back to more community-based zoning, because a lot of residents don't even know what's going on, right? Like, I try to post things online and share information and resources to people, I share your events, no one's really tuning in. So we really need to get more people to understand what's, what's happening. And I think a lot of, some old-time, old-timers, not all of them, some of them are ready to leave the city, and so they're done. But I think with this plan, Community Board nine did rezoning in two thousand and nine, and not much came out of it. Jamaica Avenue and Atlantic Avenue were rezoned, and only one big property was redone back in twenty seventeen on Atlantic Avenue near the Atlantic Diner. And that's like, how many years later? So, one development came out of, on Jamaica Avenue, one twenty-seventh street, the senior housing. So, we already have rezoned a lot of parts of the city and not much develop, we already have natural development coming out of that. It's whether or not the property owner wants to actually initiate that, because once they do that, they're also gonna initiate higher property taxes for themselves, and that goes for homeowners too, once they initiated a unit or a basement, they're gonna have higher property taxes. And I think that's something that we have to be clear and concise with actually telling homeowners and, and all these people, you expect higher property taxes for your property if you do these changes, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Good, that's a very good point, because we did raise with City Planning what the tax implications would be if people do add.
And one, and one last thing, the, the lady with the, when I went to the City of Yes hearing a couple of weeks ago, the environmental review was preliminary. So, if it's been, if it's been released, I don't, I, I would like it to be, you know, put out there online, but when, when I testified at the City of Yes hearing, they said that their, their environmental impact segment was preliminary. So, and they saw little to no impact on anything. So I think that's false, what was stated earlier. Thank you.
And that will be disquieted by law, but let me also add that you made a very valiant point, that every, you know, everybody thinks everybody's gonna develop all their properties. And as she said, in two thousand and nine, that rezoning happened and one development happened. So, just, I have to bring it back and be factual as well. Like, you're not gonna see a, first of all, every property owner doesn't have the means to do it. A lot of them are small property owners, so even as we say, one size doesn't fit for all of us, every, you're not gonna see a mountain of development. And I've chaired the zoning committee of the council, have done a lot of rezonings during the course of my career, and, you know, you may have some areas that are more developable than others, but that was an important point that you made as well. So I'm just trying to, I'm listening to all sides, but just trying to also make sure that I inject some of the things that I at least have encountered as well during my journey. All right, so we're now gonna go to online, we done everybody, has everybody in here who wanted to testify, testified? If not, you need to sign up on a sheet, and they'll get you a sign-in sheet and then we'll come back to you signing. All right, so we're gonna go to councilmember Sandra Ung's office as well, and if you can state your name for the record. All right, we're gonna go to CB twelve, Reverend Thorbs.
Good morning, everyone. Can you, okay, great. Thank you again, BP Donovan Richards, for this meeting. We totally appreciate you giving us the time. For the speakers that came before me, councilmember Ariola Holding, Palladino, even Ms. Alicia Spears, thank you for your comments, and I totally agree. Good morning, I am Reverend Thorbs, I am the chairperson of Community Board Twelve, and Community Board Twelve also is in disagreement with the City of Yes Housing. City of Yes Housing is not a solution for Southeast Queens or Queens at all, when a whole. We are residents and we feel like we're under siege in our communities. The one, the half-mile radius will affect Springfield Gardens, St. Albans, Hollis, Jamaica, South Ozon Park, and all these areas have residential homes. Which one are you willing to sacrifice? Even with concessions and terms given to the city planning, no one is listening. As I stated before, we oppose the City of Yes Housing. How do we deal with the blight? BP, you just mentioned, we first start with cleaning up what's around us and implementing the agencies that are supposed to take care of things, like our medians, that need to be cleaned up. This is what we have to enforce. These are the things that we have to enforce, from sanitation to the far, to the parks department. Also, even with our, even with our city parks, Bassey Park especially, give them the equipment they need to get the work done. This may seem broad, but it all, it all makes sense and it all comes together. We have to do what needs to be done here. CB twelve has already asked the questions about the schools, no answer. Busing, no answer. We're not getting some specific answers to these questions about how this is going to affect our schools, which are already overcrowded. And when we have had meetings with city planning, we literally have been told that it is the, it is the fault of the homeowners that this housing crisis, so-called housing crisis, is taking place.
Can I actually begin to rip up?
And with a, with a statement like that, it makes it very difficult to believe and take to heart anything that comes from city planning at this point. This is not a one, a one broad-stroke situation. Every community in Queens is different, and we should be handled that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll go to David Pecaroa, followed by David Pecaroa, Warren Schreiber.
Good morning still, Borough President Richards. Can you hear me?
Good morning, yes, we hear you.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity. My name is David Pecaroa, I am a fifty-eight-year resident of Rosedale, and I am also a member of Community Board Thirteen Queens and the Secretary for the Rosedale Civic Association. I am speaking on my behalf, not representing the organization. We represent your home, Borough President Richards, which you represented so eagerly in the city council. You appointed every one of us to the community board, and we have a wide diversity of opinions. We rarely agree on anything unanimously, and yet, but we agreed on this one thing, that the City of Yes is not appropriate for Community Board Thirteen Queens, and we urged its rejection. You trusted us to serve as the most accessible level of democracy, and I hope that you trust our opinion on this. We already have town square housing right by the Rosedale Station, because it made sense there. There were little living fields there when I was growing up. It's now town square housing. It made sense right there. Town square housing does not make sense ten blocks away from the Rosedale, the Alarion Station. There's another issue. The much larger buildings that you're talking, that were being proposed in this plan, will require larger pilings. We have one-hundred-year-old houses that could be next door to a multi-story dwelling, and who's going to pay for the damages caused to those one-hundred-year-old buildings by the pounding in of those pilings? Also, we have flooding already, and we're thankful for the, the recent groundbreaking of the, 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 the infrastructure that was done last week. But we also know that that's going, that's just to make up, to bring us up to what we need today. It does not include anything to make way for multi-story dwellings. Also, you know that we flood here, and taking up grass for these accessory dwelling units doesn't make sense, because we need the grass to absorb the water from the rainfalls. And the mayor calling us racist.
David.
Oh, okay, I, I'll wrap up. The mayor calling us racist for supporting this was, went over like a lead- Oh, okay, I I'll wrap up. The mayor calling us racist for supporting this was uh went over like a lead balloon. What I'm asking is if a community board wants this for their neighborhood, let them have it for their neighborhood. But for Community Board Thirteen, we know it's inappropriate for our neighborhood. Please don't impose it upon us. So perhaps having an opt-out would be the fairest thing. Those groups that want it, let them have it. Those both, those uh boards that don't want it, who know that the neighborhood can't support this, should be able to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We now go on to Warren Schreiber. Following Warren will be uh, will be Kevin Brady and then Catherine Peoples. Warren Schreiber.
Okay, good. Um, good morning, um, Mr. Borough President. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, and and thank you for holding this hearing. I am Warren Schreiber, president of the Queen Civic Congress, representing seventy-five civic groups in Queens. New York City is not one size fits all. Cookie cutter solutions won't work in our great city. Members of the Queen Civic Congress prefer to reside in quiet, tree-lined communities with one and two family housing. Manhattan is a wonderful borough, but is not a lifestyle that meets the needs of families in Queens, Brooklyn, Staten Island, or the Bronx. Beginning in two thousand five, our community boards devoted hours to rezonings, protecting communities from irresponsible overdevelopment. The City of Yes is a gift to developers that will undo those efforts. The diverse home-owning population of Queens, including northeast Queens and southeast Queens, worked harder and longer to achieve the American dream. The City of Yes Housing Opportunity Proposal is a direct threat to this dream and the generation of wealth it represents. The City of Yes has nothing to do with affordable housing for those on the lowest rungs of the economic la- ladder. There is some support for the City of Yes. Many of it, much of it, comes from lobbyists, real estate developers, and revni representatives who are being compensated for their support or will realize financial benefits from the City of Yes. Instead of being influenced by wealthy lobbyists and developers, all elected officials, including the Borough President and city council members, must listen to their constituents and say no to the City of Yes. And I just want to add that it would have been much better if instead of presenting this as a big, as the big ugly, each item in the proposal had been presented individually for the community boards to consider. The Queen Civic Congress stands united in unwavering opposition to the City of Yes in in its entirety. And once again, uh, Mr. Borough President, thank you for the time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Warren, for your testimony. All right, next we're moving to Kevin Brady and then Catherine Peoples. Kevin Brady and then Catherine Peoples. And second, I guess. Catherine Peoples. Think I got that right? Kevin Brady, then Catherine Peoples. Go to the next. All right, Rosemary Galston. Galston, Rosemary Galston.
Good afternoon, Borough President. Can you hear me?
Yes, I do. Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, so I am listening to, I guess, everyone's testimony and uh where everyone stands on the City of Yes. Um, I went along with the vote on my community board, however, I just wanted to add that as an immigrant, I do see um opportunities here where we can either start up our businesses, um, we can figure out ways to create more spaces in our home for our families. So while I um, while I voted no, uh, to, I guess, give the City of Yes an opportunity to revisit and um revise, I am actually um looking forward to some of the new changes that's gonna be coming down um in the long run, when this is all over and done.
Thank you for your testimony. Can you just state your name for the record?
My name is Rosemary E. Dougengalston, a member of Community Board Fourteen, the Rockaway uh Board, the Rockaway Civic Association and Neighborhood Advisory Board for Queens South.
Thank you so much for you. Did that, does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll go now to Allison Atong Rogers and then Nina Young. Allison Rogers, Nina Young.
Hello. Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
My name is Allison Atong Rogers, and I live on the border of Laurelton, Rosedale. I did hear you when you said that Reverend Flick did a lot for Merrick Boulevard. We're talking about Merrick Boulevard. That's one street in Laurelton. And I agree, I always tell everyone that he did a lot, and no one has done as much since he is no longer in Congress. I vote no for the City of Yes, and I hope that you will listen to us as constituents of Queens. I moved here to Queens thirty-six years ago. And it, coming from Trinidad, I thought this was a wonderful place to raise my children. I still live in the same house, and my neighbors I know, we have one family homes. And I think the plan that states that you can have commercial properties on our streets and the, 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 the influx of people and no parking. These areas were not built for this overload of parking. I did ask at the meeting of the precinct one sixteen, what are their plans to take care of the safety when this is approved? And he said to me, ask your councilwoman. That was a wrong answer. But I wish that you will consider listening to us. Go back to the drawing board and take our ideas into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we now will go to Nina Young and then Tom Gretsch. Nina Young, then Tom Gretsch.
We are gonna go to Vishnu Reddy, because uh the other two attendees uh no longer are in the Zoom.
So who are we going to? Oh, Vishnu Reddy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? I don't, I don't see the option to turn on my camera.
Well, we hear you, so you can begin.
I'll, I'll, I'll just start speaking. Um, hi, my name is Vishnu Reddy, and I'm a resident and co-op owner in Sunnyside. I'm so fortunate to live in this borough. I'm proud to live in the most diverse county in the U.S. and the most linguistically diverse place on the planet. Queens is a diverse borough, which means Queens residents have diverse housing needs. Unfortunately, the op, housing options in many parts of our borough is a one-size-all cookie cutter approach that forces people into a narrow set of housing options. That's why I strongly support every single proposal that is a part of the City of Yes for housing opportunity. Uh, the massive scale of the zoning changes that occurred in nineteen sixty-one decimated our ability to build the kinds of homes in our communities that have long been a way of life for Queens residents. The City of Yes for Housing Opportunity can help bring some of that back. By allowing accessory dwelling units, Queens residents can more easily live with multiple generations or earn some extra income while providing needed homes in our communities. By building apartments on our commercial corridors, we can support our local businesses. By building homes near transit, we encourage people to take the train, reducing traffic on our roads and reducing pollution. Queens, like the rest of the city, is facing a dire housing crisis. If we don't take action on this, our city will become a place that's only for the wealthy, and Queens will lose the diversity that makes it so special. We must not give in to fear and misinformation as we work to tackle this longstanding crisis. I can't wait to see the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity get across the finish line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will go to Vienna Levitin, who's in person.
Good afternoon, Mr. Borough President Richards. My name is Vienna Levitin, and I'm here to testify on behalf of myself and the Ridgewood Property Owners Civic Association against the City of Yes Housing Opportunity Proposal. New York City has been my home since nineteen eighty-nine. My family became property owners in Ridgewood eight years ago. We chose this neighborhood as our home for its quaintness, architectural charm, low-rise structures, diversity, and a strong sense of community that other neighborhoods lack. Unlike in my previous neighborhood, I've gone to know most of my neighbors here. During pandemic, we gathered in our stoops and sang songs together. Those who support City of Yes proposal want to destroy all reasons why my family moved to Ridgewood. The City of Yes proposal will lead to increased density in Ridgewood, resulting in a surge of new construction projects that will overwhelm the existing infrastructure such as school, public transportation, utilities. Ridgewood is known for its unique architectural style, historical charm, and landmark, landmark status. An influx of new large developments will annihilate the neighborhood's character, replacing historic buildings with modern structures that don't align with area's aesthetic, decimating its identity and uniqueness. Smaller neighborhoods like Ridgewood do not have the capacity to support a significant increase in population. This will strain local resources, including healthcare facilities, parks, and other public services, reducing the quality of life existing residents. Increased density will lead to more traffic and congestion. Ridgewood, with its narrow streets and limited parking, will face significant challenges in accommodating a higher volume of vehicles, worsening traffic, and making the neighborhood less pedestrian-friendly. The City of Yes proposal will lead to loss of green spaces, increased pollution in our neighborhood. The construction of new buildings and influx of residents will put additional pressure on local environment, affecting air quality, contributing to urban heat island effects. For example, Ridgewood has many six, eight, twelve unit buildings that would could, that could be converted into limited uh equity, equity co-op, giving people the opportunity to own their homes. What is likely to happen is the faceless corporations will replace longtime tenants with high-income tenants, leaving a room for, little room for families. Where is the leadership in supporting such community-based solutions? Why are we giving away our neighborhood to developers and private equity companies, pushing us towards gentrification two point O? We're in a neighborhood that will suffer effects of your um high-rent proposal. Illegally converted properties, sorry, just one minute, please. Illegally converted properties currently do not face adequate enforcement. This proposal would encourage property owners to engage in even more illegal conversions due to permissive signals that it sends. Ridgewood has flood zones, and by allowing legal basement conversions with increased density, our basement will be flooded, creating death traps for residents. Paced with widespread um cheating encouraged by this proposal, you will have, you will not have the enforcement resources to police it. While the goal is to create more affordable housing, this proposal will undoubtedly drive up property values, leading to higher rents and property taxes. This will displace long-term residents, particularly those with lower incomes, as wealthier newcomers move in. This is nothing by high, by, but a high-rent proposal. What we need is a community-based solution with the consultation and consideration of each neighborhood, not something imposed on us with uh.
Please wrap up.
Okay, sorry. Withdraw with the wrong-headed proposal and focus on the community instead, on addressing the needs of middle and low-income residents, families, and seniors who live in and want to continue living in that neighborhood, not displaced by gentrification two point O. We say no to the City of Yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Carolyn Ellis. Carolyn Ellis, that's what I think she, she stepped out. She left. All right, we're gonna go to uh Miriam Weinroth. Miriam? Okay. Anne Segal, Flushing.
Hi, my name is Anne Segal. I've lived in uh Flushing for fifty years. I'm a member of the Broadway Flushing Homeowners Association. I say no to increasing the indense, the density and height of buildings in our neighborhoods, where people like my parents and my husband and I worked long and hard to attain the American dream of our own home in a residential area. Please do not erase our beautiful neighborhoods and make them congested areas with high rises. Don't erase the American dream that people worked so long and hard for. I do not oppose attics or basement rentals, uh, of course, as long as they're safe. Um, and hopefully, uh, people, and hopefully with that, people would have inexpensive places to live. Thank you.
Thank you for your thought from this. Um, all right, we're gonna go to Jean Han and then William Scarborough, followed by William Esther Geimble, Gimlafarb, Gimelfarb, Geimelfarb. Jean Han, then William Scarborough. All right, so William Scarborough. We'll come back to her.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, I hear you now. Hi, Jean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Um, and I, and thank you for.
Whoa.
Uh, thank you for, for this opportunity, uh, for giving us this opportunity to speak and for being the only Borough President that's willing to listen to their constituents on this very, very uh existential matter. Um, my name is Jean Han, and I'm a homeowner in Forest Hills, Queens. I am strongly opposed to the City of Yes, which is an ill-conceived plan designed to strip away zoning decisions from local community boards, because we are not a one-size-fits-all city. We were told during COVID by former Department of Education Chancellor Richard Carranza, never waste a good crisis, while the City of Yes is doing the same with this zoning proposal. Daylight, air, and open space are important quality of life issues, and tossing them to the wayside with City of Yes, because we are in a quote-unquote housing crisis, is akin to throwing the baby out with the bathwater, because upzoning does not translate to or guarantee more affordable housing. Instead, market and luxury development, luxury developments get built, pushing low-income residents out. We have seen examples of this everywhere. If we are truly in a housing crisis, why isn't there be, why isn't there more being done to bring back vacant units onto the market where it wouldn't put a strain on our aging infrastructure? Where are the plans for new school buildings, hospitals, police departments, fire stations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to accompany these new buildings? Will developers be given freebies when our infrastructure is further overburdened? At the end of the day, we know that the taxes to improve these systems will fall on taxpayers who are already struggling with current inflation. I'm opposed to the expansion of transit and town, town center zones, which would negatively affect the historic and contextual fabric of my low-density neighborhood, which my neighbors and I pay hefty premium property tax to live in. I am opposed to permitting ADUs in basements and rear yards as a fright. Cramped spaces are not quality of life for neither the resident nor the neighbors, and again, brings up the question of infrastructure. Neutralizing illegal basement conversions does not make a space any safer. I'm opposed to eliminating the parking requirement. Many families in Queens will lay on cars to transport children, elderly, disabled family members to work, school appointments, et cetera. To say that we don't need parking is discriminatory against those that live in transit deserts, which is pretty much everywhere outside of high-density areas. As many here have already said, let the people control the housing process through decision-making at the local community board level, instead of a one-size-fits-all plan. Um, I wanna bring up one other point. Um, I wanna bring up one other point. We have an elephant in the room with regards to, to the class size law, where five out of the seven school districts in Queens have chronic overcrowding. And as it is, there are not enough seats within the districts to accommodate the students as is. So where are these children going to be going to school once the law is fully implemented? Or will we be sending our children to other burrows? Um, I strongly urge the borough president to, to vote no on the City of Yes housing plan. And there, there are aspects that are good and they work for high-density areas. They do not work well for low-density areas, which is Mousse, Queens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will go to William Scarborough.
Thank you and good morning, Borough President Richards. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the City of Yes Housing Opportunity. My name is William Scarborough and I am the president of the Addis Ababa Civic Organization. I'm testifying in opposition to the City of Yes Housing Plan because I believe there are parts of this plan that will be devastating to areas of Queens such as Addis Ababa, which are one and two family home communities. This plan would definitely alter the density in our communities, creating houses that will be taller and wider with narrower side yards and narrower backyards. The proposal to allow accessory dwelling units such as basement or garage apartments or additional houses built in backyards will have a negative impact on the character of our community. That negative impact is multiplied by transit-oriented development initiatives in this plan. Because the Saint Augustine's Law Road Station is next to the Addis Ababa Community, all of our community is in one-half mile of that station and would be subject to having three.
Think you muted yourself, uh, simly member.
Sorry. Uh, okay, all of our uh community would be within the half-mile and we would have three-to-five-story buildings on areas such as Murdoch Avenue, which are currently one-to-three family homes. On top of these impacts, the City of Yes eliminates the requirement to provide parking where building new homes. In an area such as ours, where affordable public, public transportation is lacking, residents depend upon their cars to get around. This plan to eliminate parking requirements would create disastrous conditions on the residential streets of Addis Ababa and other Queens communities. The combination of these initiatives increases the density and changes the character of our community in a very negative way. And it also exposes the dangers of trying to develop cookie-cutter citywide proposals that do not factor in what may be already happening in a community. Jamaica is already undergoing a massive three-hundred-block rezoning project called the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan. As stated in a press release by City Planning in June twenty twenty-four, this plan is expected to create, to create twelve thousand new dwelling units in Jamaica and will create seven-to-nine-story buildings along residential corridors such as Merrick Boulevard, which includes Addis Ababa. To impose the density of the City of Yes in addition to these twelve thousand new dwelling units is not, as the mayor likes to say, a little more housing in every community, but will represent an unfair burden that would drastically overload our community, our infrastructure, and our streets. One attraction for living in New York City has been the diversity of our neighborhoods.
Gonna actually begin to wrap up?
Yes. Many of us moved to Queens because we did not want to live in crowded, dense neighborhoods like Manhattan. We're already accepting additional housing in the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan, but this City of Yes plan will destroy our quality of life if it, if it is imposed as currently described. We urge you to reject this plan and consult with communities as to how we can add housing rather than impose a top-down citywide plan that has been roundly rejected by community boards both in Queens and throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We're now gonna go to Esther Gimmelfarb, Gimmelfarb. Followed by Esther Roger Gendron, Cara Murray-Badall, and A, and Amy Howe. So Esther Gimmelfarb. We're gonna move on real fast because we got a lot of people who'd wanna testify, so if they're not ready, we're going. Ready? No? All right, Roger Gendron.
Uh, good afternoon and thank you for the chance to speak today. My name is Roger Gendron. I'm the president of the New Hamilton Beach Civic Association. I'm testifying today uh to express our strong opposition to the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity text amendment. While we understand and appreciate the need for incre- increased housing opportunities in our city, we cannot support this plan without addressing the critical issue of flooding that our community, along with many other communities throughout New York City, has and will continue to experience. The threat of coastal flooding is not a distant concern, but a present reality. New York City's low-lying areas are already exposed to flooding by full and new moon tides, as well as coastal surge flooding by tropical storms and nor'easters. Current sea levels in New York City put over a million residents at risk, a number that would increase to two-point-two million as sea levels continue to rise. Including these areas, improved the proposal could lead to increased cost of flood mitigation and insurance, as well as the potential displacement of hundreds of thousands of residents during extreme weather events. The devastating impact of Hurricane Sandy is a stark reminder about vulnerability. Over the years, we've also witnessed a significant increase in heavy rainfall events in New York City, leading to widespread flooding and associated, and the associated challenges that come with it. These events have been a pressing concern for many communities. It's imperative that we take proactive measures to mitigate the impacts of these extreme weather events by investing in resilient infrastructure, enhancing our emergency response system, and educating the public on safety measures during such events. I urge all decision-makers to acknowledge the gravity of this issue and to hear our concerns about the challenges posed by the increasing heavy rainfall and coastal flooding events. Our collective efforts are crucial in safeguarding our city and its residents from adverse effects of these climates-induced incursions. In light of these facts, it's imperative that any new housing development within our neighborhoods takes into account the increased risk of flooding. Potential human or financial costs of ignoring these risks are too great. We've seen the damage and disruption caused by flooding.
And actually to wrap up, Roger.
And now it's our responsibility to ensure that we do not set ourselves up for greater losses in the future. The resilience and safety of our residents must be the paramount consideration in any development strategy. Thank you very much. Thank you, Borough President.
Thank you, Roger, and good to see you. And thank you for all the work you do on Hamilton Beach.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to Cara Murray-Badall. Cara, Cara Murray-Badall.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
My name is Cara Murray-Badall. I'm actually calling from California. I work for the Turner Center for Housing Innovation. We're the sister um organization of the Turner Center. Um, I'm calling not for or against, but just to shine a little bit of light on ADUs um because of how ADU policies unfolded in California. Turner Center wrote nine research papers that were to shape ADUs, to shape ADU laws in California and since other parts of the nation. In the last six years, approximately eight laws regarding ease of building ADUs have been passed.
You speak a little louder. We're having a hard time hearing you. You may have to yell a little bit.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There you go, yes.
Um, but so in California, we've passed uh eight ADU laws recently, um, since two thousand eighteen. Uh, between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, permits increased from almost six thousand to sixteen thousand, and now we're at approximately twenty-eight thousand per year, um, about one-fifth of all new construction in California. So to your point, not an avalanche of new housing, but certainly um more ADUs than we've seen. Some neighbors and members of city governments have been, were concerned that the expansion of ADUs would put a strain on city services and infrastructure like parking, water, sewer, electricity. Um, opponents worried that there's a decrease, increased density will destroy the character of the suburban neighborhood. I've heard that here as well. In fact, suburban homes and neighborhoods are actually a lot emptier than they were forty years ago, uh, meaning that there's actually room to grow across the country before municipal services and neighborhood character will be meaningfully affected by increasing density. Single-family homes are using smaller, um, are housing smaller families in larger homes. We found that since nineteen seventy, the number of people per bedroom has steadily declined in the United States. ADUs are frequently invisible from the street that we've seen. They are located in backyards and existing secondary structures are converted into aerial spaces such as attached garages. They provide an opportunity for multi-generational houses to enable family members to age in place. In fact, twenty-nine percent of ADU residents across the country um were family or friends of the homeowner. So the idea that lots of new people are coming into the city isn't exactly true. I will say, though, that at present, I'm sure you know this, median black income is about sixty-six percent of white income. However, median black wealth is only fifteen percent. Really fast, uh.
You can wrap up.
It's an opportunity to, to allow people with lower AMIs into neighborhoods that they otherwise wouldn't be able to. So eighty percent of ADUs in California are affordable uh to people making eighty percent AMI. So it's naturally occurring affordable housing. If we talk about social mobility, the ability to live in a neighborhood that has people, that has um, that has resources, allows social mobility, and helps people move through it. Only eight percent of new ADUs in California are short-term rentals like Airbnb. If I may just say.
Wrap up.
I may say a quick note on parking. Um, I've been hearing a lot that there's like uh concerns about infrastructure for ADUs, but uh parking is actually one of the things that has the highest environmental impact. Um, the heat thing that the, the woman who before me spoke about is specifically related to parking. So if there's transit nearby, you can actually reduce environmental impact by reducing parking and per unit thirty-six thousand dollars on average is uh allocated to parking fees. So for projects to pencil, it can be affecting. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will go to Amy Howe, followed by Karen Bell, and then Diane Irwin. Amy Howe?
Amy Howe is not present, so we'll move to Karen Bale.
Yes, all right, Karen Bale. Hi, Karen.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi. Um, do I have to turn my camera on or can you see me?
No, just state your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Karen Dale. Um, I'm actually speaking on behalf of myself, but also the Hollis Hills Civic Association. Um, so thank you so much for holding this. I know that our other borough presidents are not doing this. And one of the things that is amazing is democracy, right? Because it's often said to mean by the people or rule by the people. And while I appreciate being heard, and I think a lot of people do, it doesn't really sound or feel very democratic, especially when the citywide system is kind of being imposed. So I'm here to express strong disapproval of the City of Yes. Um, as a resident of Queens for the past forty-six years, I've witnessed firsthand a lot of challenges our city has faced. However, the City of Yes plan presents a, a new challenge and serious challenge that I don't think we can accept. Um, our community seems to be more at risk for some reason than others. And our roles as community members is to contribute to the well-being and support our city. And we do take this responsibility very seriously, but fixing a complex, complex housing problem is not the sole responsibility of organizations and communities like ours. So this plan that they promise affordable housing is kind of undermined by its focus to um create market-rate apartment buildings, which do nothing to actually support affordability. Because I work in Jamaica, Queens, and apartments there, studios are going for about twenty-eight hundred dollars. Um, so the City of Yes in its current form doesn't address the crisis effectively. Instead, it prioritizes these market rate developments, like I mentioned. Um, not sure also if, I know that studies have been done, but where we are in, in zip code one-one-four-two-seven, a little bit of um us, a little southeast of where we are, high-water tables exist, higher than other in our city, and maybe we need to consider several factors. I know that groundwork and stuff is being um checked, but high-water levels can impact construction, infrastructure, and drainage, making it essential to manage groundwater appropriately.
And actually to wrap up.
I just wanna reiterate that the Civic Association, Hollis Hills, does not approve or support the City of Yes. We do advocate for solutions that do genuinely address the housing need while preserving the character and integrity of our neighborhoods and the well-being of our residents. And we're really urging decision-makers to reconsider this plan and work together towards a more thoughtful, balanced, and inclusive approach that actually serves all New Yorkers. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, in person, Christopher Leon Johnson. Just state your name for the record.
Yep. Of course. Hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. Thank you, Donovan Richards, for doing this. I know, I'm from Brooklyn, New York, by the way. Thank you for being the only borough president that is doing this meeting, unlike my borough president, Antonio Reynoso. Um, I'm against the City of Yes. The City of Yes is really called a city of mess. The problem is that um this is all about getting rid of the low-density housing, like your typical brick-and-mortar housing that's made in the eighteen hundreds and nineteen hundreds, and turn it into luxury housing that is cheaply made. People should research why not to buy a house that is made in twenty-twenty-four. That will explain you why that this type of housing that they're trying to make for the City of Yes is not suitable for anybody. I know that you're the Queens Borough President, you have no real say in what material gets put up on the walls, but you know that um these um, these buildings, they look good on the outside, but deep inside, they're really ugly on the inside. They could deteriorate at any time, but to keep it real about the City of Yes, these nonprofits like um Open Europe For All, um Transalt, the Rise Alliance, Housing, Housing Conference, and um what's his org- organization, um Open Plans, they're all behind the City of Yes. They're all getting paid by the developers to push this plan. Um, I know a lot of people wanna ask you why, Mr. Richards, why you put, decided to put this in the, in the morning time instead of like five o'clock, six o'clock, or seven o'clock nighttime when everybody's out, everybody's out of work? Why are you putting it at this time?
Because I got an event in the evening. We're hosting an event here in the evening. So Donovan Richards doesn't go home nine o'clock, seven o'clock.
You should put it on Friday in the evening. You should put it on Friday, like, well, at least put it, at least put it Friday at five o'clock, like something like that. It'd be better for everybody. I know you did it today. A lot of people that, that's pushing for the City of Yes, they, they don't work, they're getting paid by developers to push this agenda. They get paid to push it. I'm not getting paid to be against this stuff. But uh, Mr. Richards, I think, thank you for doing this, by the way. Um, I say no to the yes, but you should put this on a evening time tomorrow, something like that.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Diane Irwin, and then uh Mai Trevino, and then Susan Lopez. Diane Irwin? She's here? No?
Not present.
All right, yeah, we're gonna move fast, y'all. Mai Trevino. Mai Trevino.
Not present.
Susan Lopez.
Not present.
E Holder. E Holder. Not here. Raul Rivera. Shanice S. Shanice S.
Not present.
Georgia. Pukki Akledis. I think I got the Pog. Here?
Not present.
Deirdre McDa- McDonald.
Not present.
James Freely. All right, let James in. Followed by James Ad- Adadoian Adeko. All right, so James Freely.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for putting this together. I do agree, it's, you know, inconvenient for a lot of people, but you do your best. Um, listen, town, town square, it's cheaper to build, this is, but that uh, I'm, I'm addressing the points that's DCP put up together. Um, town square, it's cheaper to build for the developers, but that does not mean that they're passing it along to the renter. That just means more profit for the developers. Uh, transit-oriented DLP has, DCP has never shown a map of the two-thirty width streets, five-thousand-square-foot lots, newer wide streets. I have one for CB six. If anybody wants to see it, let me know. Um, the seventy-six K salary, sixty percent AMI, does not help most low-income New Yorkers. According to the preliminary Vacant Sun Report that everybody refers to, um, we need housing that's under fifteen hundred dollars a month. Uh, the UAP is optional. Don't let anybody suggest that it isn't. And I don't think it's going to incentivize uh any developer because it's going to be full of extra headaches for them and more paperwork. Um, it's a fallacy that we have a housing shortage in general. We have a housing shortage of affordable units, that is to say, less than fifteen hundred dollars. Prices are not incentivized to reduce. The problem is not supply and demand. It's the square footage price that the market will support. There are numerous academic papers on the housing prices. I recommend reading Breaking the Housing Finance Cycle by Josh Ryan Collins. It's a Sage publication. You can find it online. Jean Han here, who spoke earlier, is exactly correct. Let's bring on the two-hundred K vacant uh units to market that was in the vacancy report, fifty-seven K of which simply need a refrigerator. This proposal does not solve in any way the affordable housing crisis. The one who spoke from Dome, Lauren, was the only person that made.
Thank you for your testimony. If you wanna just wrap up?
Yeah, um, you are right. The developers will not develop everywhere all at once. They are going to develop those places they can make the most money and only developers are. They are going to develop those places they can make the most money and only developers are doing that math. Thank you.
Thank you. Yautin Chu. Yautin Chu.
Not present.
Elaine Young. No? Elaine Young.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. I, I was prepping for dinner later. So my name is. You can come over if you want. Uh, thank you for having this meeting. My name is Elaine Young. I'm president of the West Cunningham Park Civic Association in Fresh Meadows, Queens. We're a civic of twelve hundred households, most of them single family homes. I would like to begin by pointing out, and I think it's been said, only fifteen percent of New York City is single family homes. Yet we are part of New York City's one size fits all approach. In fact, we are being targeted and attacked for what we are. And this goes for single family home communities of all races, which is what we have. The city of yes is an ill conceived plan that will decimate our communities, overturning the zoning we worked so hard to have in place. And it maintains the character of the neighborhood and works with our infrastructure. It would allow a large increase in density with zero infrastructure to support it. The living spaces that will be created with ADUs, um, as well as apartment buildings, uh, would not create affordable housing. This would be market rate housing. And, uh, what so many, what several people have been saying that, um, this would allow seniors to stay in their homes or would allow you to have your parents live in a basement apartment or, or, um, a tiny house in your backyard. That's very disingenuous. As a civic association president, I have enough experience with those in our community who have illegally created these ADUs and are renting them out at market rate to pop the money. The city of yes will just promote more of that. It will not promote, um, affordable housing in any way. I think all the civic leaders who are present here today understand how hard we work when people are doing things that they're not supposed to do, like paving over the entire lot, um, building larger than zoning allows. And we try to work with DOB, but, uh, really to no avail.
So much for your testimony. If you want to get one last line in.
Yes, I just want to say in closing that, uh, the West Cunningham Park Civic Association is against the city of yes for housing opportunity, and thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Angela LaPree. All right, Rosalie Kenny. Richard Helen Bragg. I knew he was here.
Good afternoon, BP. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Uh, very good. My name is Richard Helen Bragg. I'm a resident of Bellrose, Queens. Uh, I've been very active in community, community board member and civic leader for several decades. I support the recent resolution of Community Board thirteen, and I agree with the objections raised by numerous civic associations throughout Queens. Uh, Community Board thirteen unanimously opposed the, the city of yes housing opportunity proposal, citing that the plan would weaken community boards, borough presidents and city council members of their city charter mandated land use reviews. We must continue to use these existing mechanisms to ensure the long-term viability of communities, facilitate compatible uses and protect from adverse impacts of new development. In addition, significant growth in these low density communities would have serious and deleterious effects on residents, including increased congestion, straining of already stressed utility infrastructure, and costly need for additional school seats and hospital beds. The proposed regulations allow larger building footprints and higher building heights, um, with smaller yards. According to relatives in San Diego, the ADU cottages have been an absolute disaster. The removal of parking requirements would negatively impact the quality of life and affect property values our residents rightfully expect. I oppose the rushed and ill conceived plan as submitted. We believe that community boards and residents are fully capable of reviewing proposals to determine developments that would provide needed housing while maintaining the stability of the community. Please support your communities and oppose the low density aspects of city of yes.
Thank you for your testimony. Walter Mugdan.
Sorry, could you please repeat?
Walter Mugdan, M U G D A N. Not here? And followed Sadia Rahman is after. Walter Mugdan.
Hi, this is Walter Mugdan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Borough President. Uh, I'm Walter Mugdan, president of the Westmoreland Association, representing the Westmoreland community in northeastern Queens. We're strongly opposed to a number of elements, uh, within the city of yes. We agree there is a housing affordability crisis in New York City, but the city of yes does not sufficiently incentivize affordable housing, though it enables market rate housing in a lot of places. Uh, one goal of the city of yes is to eliminate single family zoned areas, but New York City has one of the lowest percentages of single family dwellings in, of any major city in the country, just fifteen percent, a fraction of other large cities. It is desirable for a large city to have mixed zoning ranging from one family homes to large apartment houses. Having one's own home remains an important part of the American dream for many residents, particularly those aspiring to become part of the middle class. Eliminating that opportunity will drive these productive citizens out of our city. We oppose allowing ADUs for any single family property or every single family property. This would effectively end single family zoning and would nearly double the allowable density in those zones. We know it wouldn't be fully built out right away, but that's what would be allowed in our community would be a target for a considerable amount of ADU development. Uh, we oppose elimination of the requirement for parking spaces. In places like northeastern Queens where mass transit access is limited, it's a virtual necessity to use a car to do most kinds of shopping, and on-street parking is already very limited. We oppose the significant increase in the FAR for one timely zones. The increase in bulk does not significantly help address the housing shortage, but substantially damages the character of neighborhoods while increasing impermeable surfaces. Our community of two hundred single family homes is entirely within what would be a transit TOD. But in Little Neck, appropriate places for high density development already exist along nearby Northern Boulevard and Little Neck and Marathon Parkway. The city of yes ignores such important realities. We oppose the amount of residential development that, that will be allowed above commercial spaces. Our commercial areas along arteries such as Northern Boulevard typically have two stories above the commercial first floor, but we think that's plenty. And, uh, it's important to understand that existing zoning throughout New York City is currently sufficient, if fully utilized, to provide the number of additional units that the mayor and the planning commission are seeking. It's not necessary to eliminate the relatively small amount of single family zoned areas in the city to accommodate the legitimate need for additional affordable housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Sadia Rahman. Sadia Rahman.
I'm here. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm going to condense my testimony today. I, um, submitted the fuller version in writing, um, via email, but also I can sort of fit into the, the time limitation. Thank you Borough President, um, Richards, for this opportunity to testify today. My name is Sadia Rahman, and I work at Chaya CDC, a community-based organization that has served the housing needs of South Asian and Indo-Caribbean communities in Queens for, um, over twenty years. I also represent the base coalition, which includes organizations like Queens Legal Services, Pratt Center, Cypress Hills, LDC, and Citizen Housing and Planning Council, among other organizations. Our coalition recognizes that because basement apartments have long been a source of affordable housing, the city needs a, needs to create a pathway to make these units safe and regulated. The base campaign fights to legalize basement units because it can serve a multitude of purposes. It is most importantly, it most importantly would allow for currently vulnerable inhabited subgrade apartments to come out of the shadows and become safe in the wake of the next stormwater surge. It would create additional affordable housing stock for low to moderate income tenants, and it would provide a safety net for limited income and aging homeowners. In order for these units to become safe and regulated, regulated, critical zoning text amendment changes are needed. We are incredibly heartened to see that the city of yes proposal comprehensively includes these, um, critical changes. Specifically, it allows for the conversion of existing buildings to become ancillary dwelling units without raising non-compliance issues with regards to floor area, height and setbacks or parking regulations. As a result of these potential zoning changes, livable spaces and small homes can be safely occupied without creating a zoning non-compliance. The impact that this sound policy will have cannot be understated. It will bolster our city's ability to be more resilient to climate disaster. It will provide homeowners drowning in mounting expenses to come up. It will ensure that tenants not have to live in fear of their locks being changed when they leave for work or worse, losing their home or life during the next storm surge. This policy can have such a large positive impact with minimal adverse consequences to communities. It allows for measured proportionate increase in density in neighborhoods with small homes. It doesn't indelibly change the character of the neighborhoods, and it minimally changes the footprint of the structure itself. This is a win-win for the city. And of course, zoning changes can't, um, stand alone. We need comprehensive legislation to create a comprehensive program for basement legalization. And Chaya, um, as a member of the base coalition is working on that as well. As such, um, the base coalition is. Of the city of yes's zoning changes that will allow for the legalization of basement in New York City.
And thank you. Hang on for one second, too. Does she, does she still here?
I'm here.
Yeah, and I thank you for that, and I, and I'm not a hypocrite. I often talk about how my parents, you know, we navigated basements pretty much our entire life, and it definitely was a great form of affordability for my parents who were teenage parents. Uh, and I wouldn't be here without basements. Uh, I did bring up an amnesty program because I did have concerns earlier about, DOB starting to over enforce once legalization hits, not to say they can't do it now. Do you have any thoughts around that?
Yeah, you know, the base coalition for the fifteen years that we've been around has been advocating for an amnesty program, and pushing, um, lawmakers to make sure that is included in, in whatever legislative package accompanies these zoning changes. And we as a coalition fully intend on continuing that fight. So once these zoning changes happen and DOBs and FIRE and HPD, um, create, you know, have, you know, there, there are sort of policy changes in place. We'll, and you know, we're going to do our best to make sure that it includes, um, the ability for homeowners to come out of the shadows without fear of being punished. And for tenants to come out of the shadows without fear of being, um, vacated, you know, within twenty four hours and having their locks changed. And, you know, we've been in conversations with the city. They're working on this. They've made commitments that this is something that they're thinking about. So we feel very sort of encouraged and heartened that a whole, that there's going to be a, you know, the city of yes is just a piece of it, but there will be a complimentary sort of legal changes that will ensure that this creates a program that is meaningful for homeowners that is easy to, that is also easy to navigate, right? Like a lot of homeowners may not speak English as a first language. We need to create a program that will reach people where they're at.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Uh, all right, we're going to go to Danny, Daniel Corzina, Corzina. Evelyn Salazar. Kathy Mora. Kathy Mora, M A U R E R. Here?
Not present, no.
Rosa Cruz. Gunner Berthin. Berthin, Berthin? G U N N A R. Bradley Walls.
Not present either.
Bridget Hamill. H A M I L. No?
No.
Fiacco, Fiaka?
Uh, first name?
Maria, M A R I A, Fiaka. All right.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Maria Fioka, and I am a resident of, uh, northeast Queens, North Flushing, and I am opposed to the city of yes. Although I have so many concerns about the city of yes, I am very concerned about what it is going to do to my historic neighborhood. North Flushing, Broadway North is a historic neighborhood. It is on the list of historic places. It's also in the transit zone of, uh, the Broadway station of the Long Island Railroad. My home is within, uh, a half a mile of that station. And I do live on a wide street and I live on a corner, and I'm definitely concerned about what is going to happen in my community. That is one thing that I'm extremely concerned about, and I attended two community board meetings. I attended, uh, virtually the, uh, city planning commission hearing, and nobody ever addressed what is happening to our historic neighborhood. So I am extremely concerned about that. I am also very concerned about the, uh, accessory dwellings. I think it's great that we can maybe provide additional space on our properties for our family. But we, we know that that's not how things work in Queens and that things tend to get abused. And that you may have somebody that's converting their garage and moving ten people into it, and something like that really concerns me. Also, I noted yesterday that the, the state is going to be giving money or something about four hundred thousand dollars lottery for people to be able to build these ADUs on their property. And if that's the average cost of an ADU, who is really being targeted by being able to put these dwellings on their property? That is not something that the average homeowner can do. So it really is a gift to the developers. So I know if my neighbor decides to sell their house, a huge multifamily is going to go up there where I'm no longer to be able to park my car or really enjoy my single family home community, and I'm very, very distressed about it.
All righty, thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Vito Interante?
Not present.
Dan Miller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Dan Miller, and I'm, uh, strongly in favor of city of yes. I want to speak specifically about the town center zoning proposals because I am a, uh, I'm a market rate renter and I live in a small walk-up building. And this, uh, I want to urge you to not overlook the benefits of more market rate housing. We need more housing of all types, and even affordable housing is fantastic. Don't get me wrong. I'm a big proponent of the UAP provisions here. But more market rate housing also helps the city. More, more people living in more apartments, even if they're market rate, helps, uh, make commercial strips more vibrant and active. And more, uh, apartments means more competition for my landlord. The ultimate power that I have as a market rate tenant is the ability to walk away, right? I can say, no, I don't want to sign that lease. I'll move and find a lower, lower rate. And when the vacancy rate is one point four percent, I don't have that power. We need to build more, we need to build more of all types, including market rate. So that market rate tenants like me in like cheaper, built smaller, you know, older buildings can have, can take some of the power back and stand up to our landlords a little more. City of yes will help us do that. And so, yes, absolutely, we should build more affordable housing. But I urge you to consider that more market rate housing is also a huge benefit to the city. And putting in more market rate housing in smaller walk-up buildings in town centers is a great way to add more homes. Same goes for ADUs, right? I would love to be able to say, hey, I would like to, yeah, I could live, I could live in an ADU. I could move out to one. And so I just urge you to support a city of yes in, including the market rate provisions and build as much as we can. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and just to go on the record, I'm not against market rate, but we definitely need to see some skin in the game. I got seventy thousand folks in shelter, uh, in Queens, and we want to definitely put a dent in that. So yes, a diversity of rentals is important, but we need to make sure all. we need to make sure also those who are living in shelter also have that opportunity to get out. All right, move on to Earl Monken.
Not present.
Ilana Castilla. Arlene
Not present.
All right, Arlene Schlesinger? Schlesinger?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's Arlene Schlesinger. Thank you. My name is Arlene Schlesinger. I'm a lifelong Eastern Queens resident and sit on the board of the Howells Hill Civic Association. Thank you Borough President Richards for asking very pertinent questions at the beginning and your broad stroke statements. We say no to the City of Yes. No increasing density and height in our suburban zones residential, which bring life and green space to our communities and help battle frequent flooding events. No ADUs of any kind as they only add congestion to our local streets and stress our already inadequate infrastructure. No renting our basement attics or any other space in, on or around our homes. No taller buildings that increase the density of low-density areas. No adding tall or even small structures with no mandatory parking requirements, which will create havoc in all our local streets. No to high-density infill in our garden apartment campuses, which make our most affordable housing in our community a livable space. It will clearly not create more affordable housing. That's just a phony catchphrase that Mayor Adams and his allies are using to hide the truth. Instead, it would be a cash cow to developers. They are the only ones who would really benefit from any of this. The rents of these units will be high and not ease our housing issues, but instead adds to them. We can only hope that lobbyists and developer contributions to Mayor Adams is not the foundation of this huge omnibus bill that has the power to destroy the middle-class, single-family homes in Eastern Queens and beyond. Yesterday's Daily News states Mayor Adams is now getting state funding for these ADUs without and before getting approval on the City of Yes or the state legislature. I say that's a bit premature. The average cost per unit is staggering almost $200,000. Imagine the taxation and the land use and income this city will charge on the homeowner. We still say no. If need be, choose the areas that voted in favor of this plan and respect the areas, okay, and the districts who voted against it. 14, 12 out of 14 community boards yes. We've already, many of them have voted against it. We hope our mayor hears our oppositions as elections have consequences from the voters of Queens in next year's elections. We ask you Borough President Richards, as our Borough President and fellow homeowner, to be our ally and to say no to this and the City of Yes along with us. Thank you so much for today.
Thank you for your testimony. We're going to go to Ethan Chan and then Maya Petrovic. Ethan Chan?
Not present.
Met Maya Petrovic.
I believe she's not, no, she's not present either.
Andrew Catalano. Unmute yourself, Andrew. Andrew? That's the former. All right, guess not him. Donna Gajja.
Not present.
Saif Alam. Right.
Hi, yes. Borough President Richards, are you there? Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Hi, Saif.
Yes, so let me, let me pull up my script. Just give me a second to. So, my name is Saif Alam. I'm a resident, longtime resident in Jamaica Hills for nearly 22 years. Jamaica Hills is the home to many immigrant families and it's a quiet neighborhood. My parents bought a home in 2002 and they wanted me to have a bigger space to live in. Since then, I noticed my neighbors were turning single-family to two-family homes to enable their homes to be rented by tenants in order to pay up their mortgage. In 2004, there was a rezoning initiative that was under discussion by residents and civic leaders to sustain the homes to either to one family, to two-family homes. Since the older zoning laws did not limit residents to build within the one-to-two-family homes. The proposal to sustain one-to-two-family homes was approved by the City Planning Commission. Also, prior to 2010, the city wanted to acquire Glen Avenue in Jamaica Hills to build new homes, which would have reduced the home values in the neighborhood. Since our civic leaders advocated to help the series Jim Noe Church successfully acquire the land, the neighborhood remains peaceful. The City of Yes Initiative raised concerns for me and my fellow neighbors. This plan would change the character of residential neighborhoods, including Jamaica Hills. This will result in overcrowding of our streets, impact safety of our area. Community leaders already expressed opposition to this initiative. So, I'm asking you and your colleagues in the City Council to not support the City of Yes Initiative because the quality of life are reeves, working-class people and our seniors matters more than having to occupy and see many buildings and traffic, which many buildings and traffic would negatively impact the peacefulness of our neighborhood and also Community Board Eight also, yes, I'm sorry.
You can begin to wrap up.
Of course. Yeah, so the Community Board Eight actually voted against this unanimously and I definitely thank you for your time for the testimony today.
Thank you, Saif. Good hearing you. Golda Frye.
Not present.
Alfred. Vic Starsky.
Not present.
Deborah Balodi. Lorraine
Not present.
Lorraine Stephens. Abigail Lynn. Michael Malia. Mark Hirschman.
Not present.
Fran Morosky. Right. Catherine Morosky, if you can unmute.
Yes. I can unmute?
Yes, you may begin.
Okay. Um, this is Catherine Morosky. I'm the Vice President of Living Party Homeowners Association in Glendale, Queens. I represent 25 houses and 70, 700 families. These houses are almost 100 years old. I'm in Upper Glendale. Already have 200 man homeless shelter. And Mayor Adams wants to put another homeless, men's homeless shelter behind it. The quality of our lives is diminishing by the year. We do not need more housing in this congested community. Community Board Five is in the blue like most areas. I strongly believe that Mayor Adams and the City Council should be consulted by mechanical engineers to survey and give practical solutions to where to develop a New York City. Removing our lawns for more parking will leave no place for rainwater to absorb. Therefore, more flooding will occur. It is difficult for landlords to lower their rents when national grid recently raised our prices 19% and water meter 8%. Soon, Con Edison rates will be raised as well. NYC rent control landlords just increased rent another 2% this year. If a landlord decides to add two more stories to their apartment complexes and the basement apartment, they need to add more plumbing and electrical wiring. If the power grid is not increased with more wiring this time next year, it will cause a major blackout in NYC. If basement apartments are illegal, it is because the windows are too high to escape a fire or flood. The only way out is the back door. In 2021, during Hurricane Ida, 13 lives were lost and it caused 75 million, billion, $75 billion in economic damage.
You begin to wrap up?
You had a question?
If you can begin to wrap up.
I wrapped that. That's done. I'm done.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony.
No problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Wanda Majica. And followed by Wanda Pedro Rodriguez. Wanda?
Hello, hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Um, forgive me if it's fine. You know, I just want to say I am a lifelong New York City resident. Born and raised, I grew up in the Bronx. You know, I'm a civil servant, working for the city now. And me and my husband, you know, we moved to Queens because, you know, we, this is the quality of life that we want for our family. You know, and, and I strongly oppose the City of Yes, only because, you know, because me and my husband are civil servants. We live, we work in the city. We want to stay in the city, close to our families. And, and Queens provides that, that that living of, of, you're kind of like in the suburbs, but you're not, but you're still in the city and enjoying the city as well. So, um, thank you for having this. Borough President, for giving us, the community, a say in this and, and having our voices heard. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Pedro Rodriguez.
My God.
Hello?
All right, there you go.
Oh, okay. Okay, I don't have anything for the camera, but okay. Uh, yes, hello, thank you for holding this up, Mr. President. My name is Pedro Rodriguez and I live in, I've lived in New York City for over two decades. I am currently living in Forest Hills. And like yourself, I am a father of a young kid, a one-year-old, a husband and a Community Board Six member. Those comments are my own. I'm writing, I'm speaking in support of City of Yes because I care about the housing crisis in New York City. Though I own my home now, my parents didn't and they left New York City because of it, splitting our family and forcing my son to season through WhatsApp. I've lost many friends and current friends who are considering leaving because of the housing crisis. And I'm sure every single New Yorker has experienced this, even people who are opposing City of Yes. I'm sure they also have friends and family that have left because of it. Some say this proposal is too large and should be done neighborhood by neighborhood. But a neighborhood by neighborhood approach is what we've been doing so far. That is the Euro process, a neighborhood by neighborhood. It isn't working. It just isn't working. Housing is a regional problem. Availability, housing availability here in Forest Hills affects the housing cost in Corona, Astoria, Wystone, even down in, in, in the Rockaways. And the reverse is also true. Housing availability over there affects the housing cost here. This is a regional problem and we need a regional solution and a piecemeal one. And that's what City of Yes is. I am, I grew up in an Section 8 apartment in the South Bronx. Originally, I was born in the American Republic. I now own a two-bedroom apartment for sales, which is not a cheap area, as you know. And I thank the city and the state for the education opportunities that they have provided me with this. And I'm, so I'm a perfect representation of the American dream. And yet, I never owned a single-family home. We cannot give everyone the American dream if we continue to say that, well, the American dream is a single-family home. That's just not going to work. There's not enough space in New York City for that to happen. So, we need to allow people to be able to live here in New York City and I had to move. And I find it very concerning that so many people seem to think that an apartment building in their street would destroy their neighborhood. I don't know why they feel this, but my family lives in our apartment. I've never owned a home. I, I don't see how my family would destroy your neighborhood if I were to move into your neighborhood. Because we have a two-bedroom, but probably want to, kind of want to have more kids. So, I do, so please support all sections of City of Yes so that all immigrant families such as mine are able to reach the American dream here in New York City, not in Florida or in Texas. Where if you, where
If you can wrap up, Pedro?
Yes. We cannot continue to say we have a housing crisis. We cannot continue to say that we need to do something and then when something is presented, say no. That's just not how you run a society. So, thank you and that is the end.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now go to Mary Orphanager.
Not present.
All right, Jane, Teresa M.
Not present.
James Trent.
Hello?
Yes.
James Trent. Yeah, hi. What happened to my picture here? Yeah, I'm James Trent. I'm the president of the Four Borough Neighbour Preservation Alliance Foundation. We're four boroughs because we only represent the interests of low-density neighborhoods, so Manhattan is not included. But just to point out that the tight zoning, the, the low-density zoning leads to tremendous stability in neighborhoods. I'm living on my block now 73 years and people say to me, oh, you must have seen a lot of change over 73 years. Actually, no. Virtually nothing here in Bellrose has changed. They often say about Bellrose that it's so stable, people only leave here when they leave on a box. We'd like to preserve that kind of thing. And we're not wasting a lot of space. This is not five-acre zoning. We're on 30-foot lots. But we have grass and trees and it's extremely pleasant living here. We want to preserve that. I want to point out something quickly though about the parking issue. You hear people say all the time, I don't go into those neighborhoods to shop. There's no parking. Or we need to hold a public meeting, but let's not go to Jackson Heights or Glendale because there's no place to park. So, this idea that you're going to eliminate parking, like it doesn't matter? It does matter. So, I think we need to keep that in mind before we say that parking is not needed because it is. And I think that's all I need to say.
Thank you for your testimony, James.
Okay, great.
Jody Corey.
Hi, give me one second. I just got to think. I have kids. I got to go to the basement. So, hold on one second.
It's okay if you've got kids. You can, it's fine, it's fine.
No, because I have three.
Sometimes he's interrupting my Zooms too.
All right, let me get that answer. All right, hold on. Sorry about that. Okay, I didn't expect to get called so quick. All right. Thank you. Hold on, let me, um. Let me, okay. Okay. Hold on, sorry. Okay. Okay. Hi, my name is Jody Corey. I live in Glendale. Thank you Borough President Richards for having this hearing. I really appreciate it. The city planning presentation was nice, great pictures and words. However, we, the people, all know this is a disaster. The middle class are under attack. We have flooding problems here in Glendale. During Hurricane Ida, the basement's down the block from us all flooded. Please take us, Glendale, out of this equation. I joined the city planning meeting a few weeks ago to testify against the City of Yes. I listened to around 12 hours of testimony. I testified against it. There were all types of people for and against the plan. Probably an equal amount of participants on each side. After listening to many different speakers, I realized the differences between the two sides and they were this. The majority of people who were for it were developers, architects, nonprofits, and a bunch of people who live in Manhattan telling other boroughs what they think is best for them. The majority of people who were against it are middle-class people who have everything to lose. There were some people who testified for it, who complained they can't afford to live in the neighborhoods they want to. This has been my life story. There are a lot of neighborhoods I would love to live in, Great Neck, Manhasset, et cetera. But I can't afford to live there and that's life. I live where I can afford to. I try, I don't try to hurt others who can't afford to live there by ruining what they have. By you supporting this plan, you are going to hurt us. And that is what Mayor Adams is trying to do to us. He wants to hurt us. He wants to put a wrecking ball to our way of life. When I tell people in my neighborhood about the City of Yes, most people have no idea what it is and they're horrified. Something this big that will destroy their entire way of life? most people have no idea what it is, and they're horrified. Something this big that will destroy their entire way of life? Their biggest investment? Imagine that. They have no idea. If Mayor Adams thinks this is so wonderful, why doesn't he come to our neighborhood and talk to us like you're doing instead of slandering us? He's been in office for three years and has yet to do one town hall where I live. I lived in this area my whole life. Saved, sacrificed to buy my house. I bought in this neighborhood because it was a relatively quiet. To commute to Manhattan. Beautiful and diverse community. If I wanted to live in a built-up area, I would have moved to Manhattan or Williamsburg. Twelve out of fourteen community boards in Queens voted against this. The two community boards who voted for it, they're welcome to build as much housing as they like. We do not want this. Only fifteen percent of homes. Okay, let me just, um, wrap up my last sentence. There are many other ways Mayor Adams can achieve his goals without hurting us. We all know that there's tons of housing opportunities in converting unused office space into residential units. Start there. See how it goes. Do a pilot program. I've lived here my whole life. I don't want to leave. But little by little, the middle class are being forced out of New York City. Thank you so much, Mr. Uh, Mr. Richards.
Thank you for your testimony. Nancy Walamsky.
Not present.
Velina Marsagili, Marsaglio.
Not present.
Okay, Simon Cad.
No.
Jennifer Meltzer.
Okay, my. My name is Jennifer Meltzer. I'm a homeowner and community board eight, Cute Garden Hills. My husband and I are retired city workers. This is our little American dream, our eighteen-by-thirty-one house with a little bit of grass in the front. I retired from thirty years at DEP. I know a significant amount about infrastructure. These houses were built in the thirties and forties. And they were not built for more residents. And our community drive in the back is not city-run. When we have flooding, we have to pay for it to clean our catch basins. Also, from my experience at DEP, I know where the flooding problems are from reports I used to run. I'm very opposed to this for many reasons, but primarily, we should not, we, the middle class, the taxpayers, should not be punished for achieving what we once just dreamt about. We are many large families. We need to use our cars to get to our stores. Also, I can't get on the forty-four bus during rush hour. It's already overcrowded. Even if hypothetically, more housing was built on top of our little shopping strip, it would make it even harder. We lost the bus. And depending where you are in Cute Garden Hills, you're either a two-fare or even a three-fare zone, even though there's no bus to cover that third fare. Many people on our block do rent out their basements. Amnesty for them would be a good idea. So I'll wrap up. That, obviously, I'm opposed, both from a professional DEP point of view, understanding the infrastructure, and also as a resident, as a homeowner, and somebody who values my community the way it is. That's why I chose to live here. Thank you very much, Borough President, for listening to all of us. We all have a lot of patience. We're still here. And, but, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go to Serene Prince and Ebony Prior.
Uh, Serena's not here.
Ebony Prior?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good afternoon. God bless you guys. So my question is, what is affordable to you guys?
We're here to listen to testimony.
Okay, well, um, my testimony is I'm against it. Um, the reason why I say I'm against it because affordable is not affordable for somebody like me because I live in Staten Island. Um. I know the view who have visited Staten Island, I don't know. I'm not really sure, but affordable is not for someone who can criteria meet that income basis on a day-to-day because they're trying to pay for their rent. And after they pay for their rent, now they have to figure it out. And I have, they have to figure out how they're gonna get food. So I'm totally against it. Um, I feel like if you're gonna take the word affordable, you need to make it where it is affordable for everyone. And not just affordable for everyone else who can afford it, like middle class and the riches and whoever. So, I'm against it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. God bless you guys.
You too. Thank you for testifying. Uh, Leo Gutman?
Can you hear me now? Right, yeah. Uh, thank you Borough President for allowing me to speak. Um, I'd like to testify in favor of City of Yes for housing opportunity. Um, I'm in favor of all parts of proposals. I think contrary to a lot of the testimony that's happened so far, this really is contextual to the neighborhood and not, um, painting with a broad brush. Um, you know, the areas that are lower density are supporting a small number of uh, basement apartments or, um, you know, attached dwellings. Um, and then the neighborhoods that can't support more, that already have higher density, uh, you know, will allow for their community, like, um, shared, small and shared housing units. Um, or the UAP proposals to allow for higher, um, more density, uh, in, you know, in conjunction with more affordability on those units. Um, I think this is something the city badly needs and it's, um, you know, really overall a modest proposal for a crisis that's really bad. Um, I would encourage anyone who hasn't checked lately to just spend a half hour on Street Easy, look at apartments in a few different neighborhoods, see like what's out there and what's, uh, affordable right now. Um, and like what the quality is. It's really bad. Um. This would give people more chances to live in more kind of dwellings, uh, at different points in their life. Um, and, uh, you know, they, the proposal, you know, really worked together to um, start making a dent in what's a really bad crisis. Um, I want the city to be able to continue to welcome people from across country and across the world to, you know, continue making the city the vibrant place it is, but with the housing situation the way it is right now, we're not able to do that. Um, and City of Yes for Housing Opportunity will, uh, start putting us back in, moving the right direction on that goal. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Marcy Mendolia? Marcy Mendolia?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I had really just signed on to, uh, listen to everybody's testimonies to see how people in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods felt about this city of yes. Um, but I guess since you called me, um, I'm also opposed to this city of yes. I, I, in theory, maybe it's a good idea having housing for people to be affordable. But in practice, I mean, I, I don't really know how it would work so great. Like, I live on a quiet street in Middle Village and it's all basically two-family homes. And we already struggle with parking over here. Like, people are constantly being parked in no parking zones on this street and around, you know, the blocks around me as well. And like, I'm always having issues with people parking like across my driveway, trying to squeeze in spots. So like, making affordable housing in neighborhoods where parking is already an issue is not gonna help. Um, and also, like, yes, aff- affordable is one of those terms where it's like, affordable for who? Like, so, you don't, you don't really know, like, what, what affordable is. I, I heard somebody ask a question and you said we were just listening to testimony, but like, and somebody also, also said, like, I can't afford to live in other places, like, it, it's one of those things where it's a very broad spectrum and it's kind of hard to make it a, a, a one-size-fits-all when all parts of the city are so different. Um, but that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And affordability can range from anything, because there is a how to short, housing shortage from thirty thousand or below to a hundred and thirty thousand. I meant, but to just broadly put it out there, depends to each its own, you know, depending on where you're at. Um, there, there are challenges everywhere, especially for those earning in between thirty and eighty thousand a year. Um, but each, to each its own. Um, Joyner Nicole?
VP, um, we have Leo Gutman from before, so I'm just gonna unmute him first.
Well, he spoke already, though. Leo Gutman spoke.
Oh, okay, sorry, my bad.
Okay.
Joyner is not present.
Nicole Joyner, I'm sorry. Say, Sayini Morle? Sayini? Morley?
Not present.
Jody Hirsch?
Not present.
Carlos Liriano?
Not present.
Finger?
Not present.
Jerry Westler? All right.
I don't need to, uh, speak.
Okay, thank you. Cliff Hamburger? All right. unmute Cliff, if you're still here? Cliff Hamburger? Judy Cohen?
Not present.
Ashuk Ramseran, I know him.
Not present.
Okay, Claudia Valentino? All right. Bless you.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you so much Borough President for your ongoing civic engagement. It's always appreciated and this hearing is as well. Thank you. Um, City of Yes, of course, I'm the president of the Forest Hills Community and Civic Association. For the record, I'm the person who did all the paperwork to downzone my neighborhood, which sits, uh, south of the Long Island Railroad line, going all the way to Union Turnpike and spanning from Ascan to about Selfridge. The reason for doing that about twenty years ago had to do absolutely with infrastructure. We could see the problems happening then that we have really, you know, has really increased now, including, um, sewers, infrastructure, flooding and all that sort of thing. Also seeing pave-overs of front yards and all kinds of odd extensions of houses in other communities. So that's the foundation. That's why we did it. Okay. So, City of Yes is complicated. It's now one-twenty-five. Okay, so we've been hearing people since ten o'clock. We could sit till five days from now. People would still be coming with all kinds of reasons, varied reasons, sound reasons for why they oppose it. So it's complex. Okay. I want to go, instead of going micro-macro, I want to go macro-micro. The macro problem is absolutely the case. There is a housing crisis here, an emergency, as it's been called. Affordability is impossible. I started out, my first apartment was in Spanish Harlem, rent-controlled, with a bathtub in the kitchen. I wish I still had it. Um, those kinds of options disappeared a long time ago. Any of us who have lived here all of our lives have watched that happen. The growth of Long Island City and unaffordability there is astoundingly shocking and wrong. So the macro has to do with affordability for single people coming out of college, for little, young families, and also our homeless population. So what I would say, I'm wrapping up. What I would say, please, we need to come up with something else. I want people housed before snow flies. I would like us to use the M1 properties. I would like us to have a Marshall Plan to manufacture mobile homes, which I have a lot of friends who live in them, for both the homeless, to provide services and communities for our vets, and also mortgage programs for people to buy mobile homes on the M1 properties and create neighborhoods. The fact is, is that it'll still put pressure on fire, on police and on our schools, but, you know, the people are here. So we're, we're gonna have this, we need the seats anyway. So what I say is, let's stop all the nonsense with this thing. My neighborhood is not the problem, nor am I, nor have I ever been. So I think we need to turn a corner, stop all this and come up with something else. I do thank you for all of the work that you do on behalf of Queens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Rebecca Garvenow?
Not present.
Eileen Soul?
Not present.
Laura Ricciardi, Ricciardi, Ricciardi.
Not present.
Henry Euler?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Henry Euler. I am the president of the Orbondale Improvement Association. Um, we are opposed to the City of Yes Housing Opportunity section. Um. We, um, we're very upset because right from the beginning stages of this, uh, proposal, uh, civics were not involved. And, uh, lead, uh, community people were not involved. It was a lot of real estate interests, a lot of pro-development groups, but not the people that actually live here for the most part. So, uh, that's why a lot of the people that are testifying are so upset about it because they didn't have a chance to have input at the very beginning stages. Um, I'm very concerned about the transit-oriented development section because, uh, as Long Island Railroad goes through our neighborhoods here in Orbondale and Western Bayside, um, they, uh, they, the half-mile radius around each station extends through a whole, a really large, uh, amount of properties in the area. And people that are living there are upset because they feel that their communities will change significantly, and not for the good. Okay? Uh, I, I handed in, uh, some written testimony to save some time, uh, so that you could see some other points that I had made. Um, I think the bottom line is that the people have to be involved in, in this situation. Um, because we are the residents and we are the voters of the area. And we need to help have input into what's going on here. Thank you Borough President, uh, Richards for your, uh, holding this hearing today. And also I hope that you will continue to, uh, uh, speak about this and, and take into account all of these situations and concerns that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Abomaya, thank you for your testimony, Henry. Amy Abomaya?
Not present.
Isok Davis? Isaki? Isoki?
Not present.
Anderson Shern?
Oh, that's, I think that's Shern.
I was almost going to switch her. Dan Kent?
Not present.
Renee Hill? R E N E, that's the way she spells it.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, hi. This is Ariane. Um, I didn't know I was gonna get called, but, um, I'm glad I did. Of course, I agree with, um, how we voted on Community Board Twelve as a Community Board Twelve member. And, um, I just see it as a real estate investors grab. Um, they, they will eat up the single-family homes. And, uh, they will, the, the homes won't be affordable to anyone after the investors get it. Um, I think if you're gonna have basement apartments, the homeowner has to live there. I don't agree with basement apartments. I don't agree with basement apartments, but I know people have to do and they're doing it now. It should be the homeowners living there. It should not be an investor buying the property and putting someone in basement. Same thing with ADUs. If you're gonna do it, you have to live there. Um, also, um, there's so many things. Um, as far as I I was the one that helped to um, to landmark Aslay Park. There should be no changes to um, something that has been landmarked. Uh, even if they say the facade stays the same, the whole con- texture of the neighborhood will change. Uh, if there's um, allowed like two and three families in these homes. And um, people strive to come and move into these homes. I have so many people, neighbors, that are from Brooklyn and Bronx, mainly from Brooklyn because they can't stand the way Brooklyn is so congested and looks. So they came here, they moved here, and now the mayor is saying, hey, I'm gonna make Queens just like Brooklyn, which is crazy. We need neighborhoods, especially us black uh, communities that we can strive to move into. And as far as these young kids that say, oh, you know, or even people that are new to the country uh, saying that they need someplace to uh, to afford, I I understand that. But don't move somewhere where you can't afford to move, or you live with family like I did until my thirties, and then you buy your home. So I, you know, this thing where I need a house or I need property, they all want money, these young kids. This is all, this is the, the young kids are running the city and it's crazy. So I I think they need to to have more life experience to understand that they're not gonna wanna live on top of each other as they grow older. So I, you know, I stand against the City of Yes, and I have more to say, you know, I do, um, uh, Queen uh, Queensborough President, but I I that'll be another day. And thank you.
For your testimony. Eileen Miller.
Not yet.
Surprise. Oh, is she here? She's here.
Uh, Daniel Kent is actually in the room, so I'm gonna promote him.
Oh, Dan Kent. Okay. You said he's in the room or?
Hello, everyone. This is Dan Kent.
All right, there you go, Daniel.
I don't know how to turn on my camera here. Um, but in any case, uh, hello, thank you for the opportunity to to speak. I'm here to express my strong support and favor of the City of Yes. Um, the City of Yes is a modest proposal that asks neighborhoods to just add a little bit of housing everywhere in the city. So if we say yes to replacing uh, vacant Walgreens with a three or four apart- four story apartment building, it's not going to destroy our neighborhoods. It's going to make them nicer. If we say yes to letting one of our neighbors at an ADU in their backyard so that they can downsize and let their kids and grandkids move into their family house, that's not gonna destroy our neighborhoods. It's gonna make them better places to live. City of Yes is not asking anyone to give up their American dream. It's only asking you to share your American dream with a few more people in your neighborhood. Now, what does destroy our neighborhoods is the housing shortage. It is the root cause of our homelessness crisis. It's the root cause of the affordability crisis. And the reason we don't have enough housing is because we don't let it get built. New York City builds one-fifth the amount of housing every year compared to Seattle, Washington, or Austin, Texas. That's because we are currently a city of no. So every neighborhood just needs to allow a few more folks to move in. It'll make your neighborhood nicer. It'll allow more people to share in the American dream, and it will help stop the destruction that the housing crisis and the housing shortage is causing for low and moderate income families in New York. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Please support the City of Yes. We need more market rate housing. We need more housing for everyone, and this is a modest, reasonable proposal that is not going to transform any neighborhood. It's just going to make neighborhoods a little bit nicer. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now to Andrew Goldness.
Not present.
Brendan Chaney.
Not present.
Oh, yes.
No, he's present.
Brendan Chaney.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Brendan Chaney. I'm Director of Policy and Operations at the New York Housing Conference. We're a nonprofit affordable housing policy and advocacy organization. We support the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity as one important solution for our affordable housing crisis and history of housing discrimination. New York City's affordable housing crisis is obvious. The housing vacancy rate is one point four percent, the lowest in fifty years, and nearly five hundred thousand households are paying more than half their income in rent. The city needs more affordable housing and more housing supply overall. The City of Yes will allow for more housing in all neighborhoods and more affordable housing without changing the character of the neighborhoods. The universal affordability preference will add affordable housing, bought conversions from offices to residential, eliminating parking requirements, adding accessory dwelling units, transit oriented development, and town center zoning will add housing supply citywide. These policies will also promote fair housing. Our New York City Housing Tracker, which shows affordable housing production by city council district, shows that most of our housing is produced in a few council districts while many districts are essentially opting out of adding new housing. The top ten council districts that produce the most affordable housing finance more than thirty-five hundred units each over ten years, while the bottom ten districts finance just two hundred units or fewer each. This disparity is particularly stark in Queens. Five of the ten council districts that produce the least new affordable housing were in Queens. The City of Yes proposal will allow for more housing in all types of neighborhoods, from high density to low density neighborhoods. But we must support all provisions in the City of Yes. If we allow for provisions to be eliminated or watered down, particularly policies for low density neighborhoods like ADUs, eliminating parking mandates, transit oriented development and town center zoning. If we let some neighborhoods say no to housing, we will perpetuate our housing crisis and housing discrimination. We must say yes to housing in all neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Michael O'Keefe. O'Keefe. Michael O'Keefe.
Thank you Borough President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and uh, I'm sorry, I don't see how to uh, get my camera working, but thank you for your stamina, you and your staff. Uh, my name is Mike O'Keefe. I'm the President of the Pre-Mor Civic Association in Bellrose. And I'm also a member of Community Board Thirteen, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself and uh, and the Pre-Mor Civic Association. So one of the biggest objections to the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity is its one-size-fits-all approach. An example of this is the A T A D U proposal. The homes in my civic area are on thirty by one hundred foot plots. Uh, garage conversions or extra cottages will be very intrusive as these homes are already only ten feet apart. Uh, since we're not close to a subway, most households have one or two cars. Parking is becoming increasingly difficult, and so people are paving over their front yards. The loss of green space is hindering drainage and affecting the quality of life. Regarding town center zoning, I would like that also to be contextual. I believe that four stories of housing above a commercial ground floor is too much for a low density area of Bellrose. And there need to be limits on the location and number of such buildings on on the main streets. Uh, since the proposal, the City of Yes removes input from the community boards and the city council member. We don't know how our input will be heard under the new uh, uh, new proposal. So just in closing, the Pre-Mor Civic supports the uh, the Queens Community Board Thirteen Resolution, opposing the City of Yes as currently proposed, and I thank you again for uh, your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. We're going to Dan Biano. Dan Biano.
Hi, hi, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, thank you for uh, giving me time to speak. Uh, my name is Dan Bianco. I'm a resident of Forest Hills. I live in Community Board Six. Uh, I'm testifying in support of City of Yes. Uh, City of Yes is an incremental and contextual approach to help address the city's housing problem. It does not introduce building forms where they would be in conflict with the surrounding neighborhood. It allows for infill development of low-rise mixed-use apartment buildings in areas where those buildings already exist. It promotes low-rise development in areas explicitly served by the subway system, exactly where we want them to occur. Um, the universal affordability preference is a part of the City of Yes that has potential to add the most housing. But again, UAP is 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 also contextual and incremental. Uh, it's contextual in that it provides an F A R bonus to multifamily buildings developed in R six, R ten neighborhoods where those buildings already are the norm. And this F A R is required to be a hundred percent affordable. And it's, UAP is also incremental into the, in that it um, it's really ongoing to apply to vacant youths, units, uh vacant lots in those R six, R ten zones, which are not common. Uh, like for an example, in Queens Community Board Six, there's only like a handful of developer, developer lots in R six, R ten zones, and like the most famous of which is the Parkway Hospital site, which was like really difficult to develop. So this is not gonna be a a huge change to these neighborhoods. Um, and finally, I'd like to speak to a specific condition that my community board placed upon the ADU zoning proposal. Um, they want to impose a requirement that the homeowner have to bring their entire home in compliance with current current energy code, and that is just unduly onerous. Um, this would immediately kill the ADU initiative. It would just make it too expensive for homeowners to even consider uh, adding an ADU to their property. So uh, I just like, hope that you take that in consideration, and I think the homeowners are already incentivized to update their homes uh, in response to utility costs and uh, in response to available utility rebates and incentives. So I don't think this is necessary. So that's my testimony and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will go to Marie Marcina. Marcina. All right, Mar- uh, Wilson Chang.
Not present.
All right, Howard Bernbaum. Bernbaum. Present. You may begin.
Howard, please unmute.
Unmute. Alrighty, we'll move to the next one. Alana Chen.
Not present.
Richard Gibbs. Brandon Castro. Richard Gibbs. Okay, Richard Gibbs. Richard unmute. You unmuted, Richard. Hello? All right, we don't hear you, so you'll have to come back. Brandon Castro.
Not present.
Rosemarie Laspiza. Laspiza.
Not present.
Mary Claire Sullivan. Joanne Sullivan. All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I don't see a way to show my face, so I'll just start talking. Uh, I'm Joanne Sullivan. I'm a lifelong resident of Queens. The city claims that the City of Yes will address the housing crisis by making it possible to build a little more housing in every neighborhood. How can you be sure that real estate developers won't continue building many more expensive apartments than affordable ones? How can you be sure that ADUs won't be used as vacation rentals? How can you be sure that the City of Yes will lead to just a little more housing in every neighborhood? What are the safeguards to prevent a lot more housing from overwhelming low-density neighborhoods? The effect of additional housing in low-density neighborhoods could be much greater than the effect in high-density neighborhoods. Paving over yards to add ADUs could cause more flooding. Multi-story buildings could block light from reaching the yards of neighboring properties. Yards and gardens in low-density neighborhoods add to the common good. They absorb stormwater and carbon dioxide, and they support wildlife. And walking past home gardens can enhance the well-being of neighbors, neighbors. I'm afraid the City of Yes could destroy low-density neighborhoods. Instead of asking residents of low-density neighborhoods to sacrifice their quality of life, why not ask apartment buildings to give up a little bit of their parking lots, gyms, common rooms, et cetera, to cram in a few more apartments? When real estate developers built up the Hudson Yards, they gerrymandered a map of Manhattan to take advantage of a program that was meant to help distressed urban areas. Despite the intent of that program, Hudson Yards is the city's most expensive neighborhood. I'm afraid that the City of Yes will be a similar Trojan horse that will just create more apartments for the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We now will go to Peter Beetle.
Not present.
Brian Block. CB Thirteen Chair.
I'm here, Mr. BP.
You may begin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having this meeting. I'm Brian Block, Chair of CB Thirteen, also the President of Cambria Civic Association. Whereas Community Board Thirteen held public meetings and discussions concerning our our um, resolution to propose City of Yes for Housing Opportunity Citywide Zoning Amendment, including before our land use committee as of June tenth, whereas each of the provisions of City of Yes for Housing would remove a traditional New York City mandated community board president, Borough President, City Council aware um, uh, reviews uses not permitted under existing zoning and land use provisions. Whereas the best ways to address possible future needs require New York City to provide tools and resources to each of the community's boards to identify parcels in any given community that might be, that might be appropriate and makes sense for beneficial local development and therefore thereby foster collaborations with government, community, and the private and non-prove, private sectors to realize such beneficial benefits. And whereas, as of right, features of each of the provisions of City of Yes for Housing Opportunity would weaken, if not render totally useless, the existing city charter mandate, community review provisions. And it goes on further, Mr. BP, you have a copy of this. I know time is very precious. Uh, we just want to let you know that our Community Board Thirteen voted unanimously forty-one to zero against the City of Yes. And we just don't, with the density, the parking requir- taking away the parking requirements and the infrastructure aspects coming into the City of Yes would be a detriment to this, to the residents of Springfield Gardens, Bellrose, Floral Park, Queens Village, Alton, Brookville, Rosedale, Warner Ville, as well as Cambria Heights. We vehemently approve, disapprove of the City of Yes. Um, I can tell you personally, when I go back to Brooklyn to visit family members along Nostran Avenue and Utica Avenue, this is what Linden Boulevard and Cambraes can look like if the City of Yes can go through. Just take a drive down Church Avenue, Nostran Avenue, Utica. That's what communities in thirteen can look like if the City of Yes goes through. Thank you very much, Mr. BP. And I grew up in Brooklyn. I just don't wanna have my neighborhood looking like Brooklyn anymore. I left that, my parents left that area, Mr. BP.
Let's not talk that bad about.
I'm not, hey, Mr. BP, my birth certificate says, has says Brooklyn, but I don't want to hide like I was when my parents left Brooklyn. We left there for a certain lifestyle. Uh, thank you very much, BP, but you know what I'm saying. I'm not just another neighborhood, but Mr. BP, go down Nostran Avenue and Utica Avenue, and that's what the City of Yes will bring to American Linden Boulevard.
All right. Thank you for your testimony, Brian.
Thank you, BP.
All right, no problem. Bob Marchetta.
Not present.
Come at Connie Murray. Connie Murray. Connie Murray.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Connie Murray. I am a lifelong New Yorker, born in Manhattan, and I've lived in the beautiful borough of Queens for almost thirty years now. Uh, the City of Yes Housing Opportunity is a giveaway to developers. Uh, the City of Yes Housing Opportunity is a giveaway to developers. Um, the vacancy rate has been mentioned a lot today. Um, but that's the overall uh vacancy rate. Uh, the vacancy rate for units that are above twenty-four hundred dollars, and that's actually kind of cheap for the expensive units, is closer to three point four percent vacancy, and it's probably going to go higher um as time goes on, because that's older uh data at this point. Um, and the second quarter of this year saw one thousand seven hundred, uh, one thousand seventy-seven new building permits filed. That was from April to June. Uh, there is a ton of construction and development that's going on in the city. And especially here in Queens, it's not a little bit more housing that's happening where I live in Long Island City. It's a ton of new development. Long Island City has sprouted buildings that are eighty stories tall, and they're massive. Flushing, Queens, as well, has seen a great deal of development, as has Jamaica. So we're already doing a lot of building. There already is a lot of yes going on here, but how affordable really are those units? Uh, somebody pointed out that there was a thirty percent vacancy in Long Island City Towers. You refuted that. I wonder what it is, honestly, because I live here. And they, those buildings are not full. So let's fill what we've already built first, because we don't have a housing crisis. We have a housing affordability crisis, not a dearth of units. Thank you. Thank you, B P.
Thank you for your testimony. Alright, uh, we're going to Felix Thompson.
Felix, please unmute.
Oh, he's not there. Okay. Oh, Nancy, nothing. Uh, Felix, you want to unmute? Alright, we'll move on to Mary Claire Sullivan.
Not present.
Sandra Baron.
Not present.
Yong Chi.
Not present.
Eugene Phallic. Alright.
Good afternoon, Donovan.
Good afternoon.
They won't let me put my picture on, but that's okay. We know each other. Uh, I hope I won't take too long. I'm a member of the Board of the Bay's Water Civic Association, and I'm speaking here for the association. Now Shakespeare said, "Kill the lawyers." I don't know that we should kill the city planners, but we certainly need to make them go away. The proposal is anti-democratic. It is fundamentally a plan to substitute unelected bureaucrats or our elected officials. Anything necessary can be done under the existing rules. Excuse me. One example is Reverend Flake's development that was done under the existing rules. The concept of transit-oriented development ignores shopping. As you know, Edgemere is right near the Thirty-Six Street subway station, but the poor people who live there have no place to shop. They've got to walk, assuming that they don't have cars, a mile or two to get to shopping. And I have to walk half a mile or more to get two gallons of milk and a week's supply of groceries? A subway station only means that it's transit to Manhattan, but not shopping. There is a serious question as to the shortage of housing. NYCHA has thousands of unrepaired apartments off the market. Airbnb has thousands of apartments off the market. And landlords have some perverse incentives not to rent some apartments. Not to say that people should live on the streets, as I think you recall. My grandparents lived with Senator Sanders in the Hamels houses, and we thought it was terrific when they finally got in there. This is not likely to lead, this is likely, excuse me, to finally lead to the breakup of the city. As already proposed in state law, it invites Staten Island and Eastern Queens to leave. As others have said, the city of no proposal will provide a little more Manhattan in every neighborhood. I'll submit additional comments in writing.
Thank you for your testimony, Eugene. Alright, uh, we now go to Stacy Smith.
Not present.
Alex Omlavich.
Not present.
Mala Kaiman.
Not present.
Phil Orenstein. Orenstein, Orenstein, Phil.
Uh, hi Borough President. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Um, I'd, I'd like to echo uh many of the people's sentiments here uh against the uh City of Yes proposal for housing. Um, I live in a co-op uh in Eastern Queens. There are many such co-ops which do provide actual affordable housing. Um, you know, it's, uh, there are many opportunities here. Uh, the, uh, the neighborhood is a beautiful one, racially integrated, beautiful neighbors, beautiful tree-lined streets. Uh, and we live in an affordable co-op. Uh, the maintenance is very reasonable. Um, I heard that there's a proposal to, uh, to use the grassy spaces uh and the open spaces of the co-op uh for uh some kind of a, uh, development. Uh, we are adamantly opposed to this. Um, I speak for uh many, many people in our co-op. Uh, as we've heard from the community board, I'm in Community Board Thirteen, which definitely opposes this. Um, let me just state unequivocally, we are not a dumping grounds for the real estate industry and the city planners uh to make their own profits out of our homes, our neighborhoods, uh, our dwelling places and our quality of life. Uh, we say unequivocally no. Uh, as you've heard from most of the, uh, the people who live here, uh, civic associations, our community boards are all in opposition to this. Uh, and um it's, it's just a, uh, a cash grab by the developers, uh, and uh and the real estate industry. Uh, thank you for listening to my testimony, uh, and God bless.
God bless. Thank you for your testimony. Jack Connors.
Not present.
Lou Sanan San Antonio. I got that right. Lou San Antonio.
Not present.
Zeke Lugar. Zeke, Z E K E.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, thanks for letting me speak. I did not. Uh, I was worried I'd already missed my turn. Anyway, so hope you guys can hear me. I, um, yeah, um, uh, yeah, uh, my name is Zeke. I live in Forest Hills with my parents. I am thirty-one years old. Um, and yeah, um, I'll, I'll start by saying, uh, Borough President Richards, I hope that you vote no, vote against this plan. This is going to hurt uh my family, my community, and all of us in New York City. Um, but uh I'm not going to rely on that, so I'm going to address the rest of the people, uh, anyone who's still hanging around on the Zoom. Um, and yeah, um, so yeah, a lot of, uh, a lot of young people are coming on here and supporting uh this plan, and uh I think there's like some uh perspective out there that, you know, like people in apartments, young people, uh, we stand to benefit from this plan. Uh, and I just want to like, I want to say like that's, um, you know, uh, this, uh, we're really pushed a lot of propaganda, uh, you know, in, uh, you know, in New York City today, especially, uh, people who go to college were told, oh, you're educated now, you're privileged, you're, you know, you're, um, you know, you're an elite, you're part of the elite society, and that, you know, uh, was a gold, uh, you know, there are, there are other people out there who are really struggling, and we have to give what we have to help them. Um, and you know, yeah, they, they convinced some of us. Some of us really are really convinced, some of us less so. Um, but, um, yeah, um, but like if we really look at things, if we talk to the people around us, like this would hurt everyone. It hurts property, uh, homeowners, it hurts renters, raises property taxes, raises rents. And I'll just say, if, uh, you want to, we need to come together as a city, as Queens. If you want to, uh, uh, join, uh, if you want to speak to other people and come together, uh, reach out to, uh, Defending Our Neighborhoods Central Queens. Go to defendingourneighborhoods.com. Uh, hello at defendingourneighborhoods.com, uh, if you want to email us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. We're now going to Stephen DeCastro. Present.
Hello.
Hello.
I will, uh, turn on my camera. Um, whoa. For some reason, my camera is not on. Hold on a moment.
Is that, is that on now?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
Okay. Can you see me? Uh, you cannot.
I can see a pic, a picture of you.
Yes. Okay, well, I, I will speak. My name is Stephen DeCastro. I live in the Woodside neighborhood and I, uh, um, and want to speak out for Woodside Queens. And, uh, there are several different development plans and zoning variances affecting our community. And, uh, I want to, uh, say that, uh, we, uh, we need to uh, take a, take a moment, take a stop and look at the fact that, uh, Woodside Queens does not have its own development plan. And, uh, if you look at the, um, issue of, take for instance, the Interborough Express Rapid Transit Proposal. Now, uh, this situation is, it's, uh, it's one of the the things that would affect our neighborhood, Woodside area, the most, and especially Little Manila, which is very significant for the three hundred thousand Filipinos of, uh, New York State and, uh, New Jersey. And, uh, if you look at that, uh, uh, IBX feasibility study, you'll see that there are neighborhood plans affecting Bushwick, Sunset Park, Brooklyn, East New York, uh, Brooklyn College. There are, um, neighborhood plans that, uh, have already been drawn up by Department of City Planning for these different, uh, these different, uh, uh, neighborhoods that the IBX is running through to, to make sure that they are consistent with their neighborhood plans. But Woodside, on the other hand, has no neighborhood plan, and we are desperately in need of a neighborhood, uh, plan, uh, by the Department of City Planning, just because we have, uh, problems that can be solved through good planning when it comes to parking, the issue of parking, the issue of streets and potential street closures that could really help, um, the Filipino community. And, uh, also when it comes to housing and, uh, when it, uh, comes to, um, uh, just the, uh, uh, overall whether we need a community center, for example, and the zoning and, uh, uh, guidelines for zoning variances. And so I, uh, hope that we can look at the planning issue, not just planning issue proposals coming to us, but the idea of Woodside having its own neighborhood plan.
Thank you. I guess city planners hearing that. They're sitting here. Thank you for your testimony, Stephen. Uh, we will now go to Monica Dingel.
Hi, Monica Dingel. I'm a Realtor and retired New York State Housing Court Clerk. T O D proposal will change the graphics of the neighborhood quality of life. I live near Locust Manor, Long Island Railroad. Developers have already bought combined lots waiting for the City of, New, City of Yes to be approved. I see the two-story homes that it's about to overshadow. Monthly payments on the current one point five million dollars homes bought in the neighborhood, nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Not one of these are going to be affordable housing. Second, I disagree with the environmental infrastructure statement that would not cause additional needs. Hospitalization is horrible right now. I personally lost my mother. One factor was that she spent two days in the E R at L I J waiting for a bed because it was so overcrowded. That was just November twenty twenty-three. And I referenced my housing court experience. Housing court and H B D inspections need to be addressed before you can figure all of this out. Many homeowners are losing their rent and are lending, and their lending companies are for closing on them because housing court is overwhelmed and rents are behind. Developers come in, they take over the homes, and now you have one point five million dollar homes. New construction without parking means more pressure on an already over-pressured um system. Other than that, I kind of like it.
Okay. You get the award of the day, I guess. Alrighty, thank you, Monica. We're going to go to Lisa Gannon. Lisa Gannon.
Please unmute Lisa.
Hi.
Hi.
I just want to say, no, I oppose this. Um, it's not good for anybody, uh, density and, uh, you know, the unique, uniqueness of Queens and diversity of Queens is beautiful. And, uh, I think there are other solutions. I'm not in that department to figure it out, but I think there are a lot more sol- solutions. But thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your testimony, Lisa. We'll go to Dennis Chan.
Not present.
Elaine Young.
I already spoke. I already spoke earlier.
Alright, thank you. I don't know. Maybe you signed up twice. That's alright. Thank you. Dalen. Dalen.
Not present.
Charles Lippert. Lippert.
Not present.
I think Daniel Kent spoke already, right? Unless there's a second Daniel Kent. Dan Kent spoke. Phyllis Inserillo. Phyllis Inserillo, I N S E R I L L O.
I'm here. Thank you, Borough President. My name is Phyllis Inserillo, and I am the co-president of the Howard Beach Londonwood Civic Association. We represent over two thousand, twenty-eight thousand people living in Howard Beach in the borough of Queens, and our community has come out in overwhelming numbers to say that they are opposed to the City of Yes Housing Opportunity Tax Amendment. Howard Beach is a community that consists of one- and two-family homes, garden apartments, and high-rise condo and co-op buildings. Families choose to live in this tight-knit community because of its suburban feel with easy access to the city. They did not choose to live in a community that is overburdened with too many people, minimal parking, or overdevelopment. Our community faces significant coastal flooding during weather events and high tides, challenges that will only get worse over time. The safety of our residents should be of the utmost importance to everyone, including those who designed this plan, and recurrent flooding poses a risk to both property and personal safety. A D U's can put extra stress on existing infrastructure, especially in areas where the drainage systems may already be under pressure during heavy rains or floods, which happens throughout Howard Beach. Our flooding history raises questions about the sustainability and safety of new housing units and poses a significant challenge to any development proposal. Our first responders already have difficulty navigating our streets during coastal storm events. This plan is not suitable for our town, and we request to be removed from it. This plan could have easily been broken to be, broken down to be voted on by our community boards instead of it's a city-wide change through the existing U L R process. We suggest that the Department of City Planning revisit the idea of making these changes on a case-by-case basis. But if you don't, we want you to know that Howard Beach is saying no. We say no to more students in our already overcrowded classrooms. We say no to waiting longer for basic infrastructure fixes. We are saying no to housing units on top of stores on Crossway Boulevard. We are saying no to the people who sit in Manhattan and are trying to tell us what we need in our community. To them, we say we need more police officers, more EMS workers, more firefighters, and better laws that To them, we say we need more police officers, more EMS workers, more firefighters, and better laws that protect our families. We need better infrastructure for our sewers and utilities. We need to get the correct, we need to correct our flooding issues in the community to keep our residents safe. Get rid of squatters that have taken over homes and let landlords have their homes back and their rents paid. Wanna fix something, fix it from its core. I hope that the Borough President and all in attendance are listening today. Twelve out of 14 community boards have already voted no, so your vote should be a no too. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ryan Gerdowski.
Not present.
Hangba, Kongbeo Ma. Hangbe, Hangba Ma, okay.
Please unmute.
Uh, Quinn Lynn. Who can, who can?
Not present.
Helen BR.
Please unmute Helen.
Dawn Scala.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Hi, um, thank you for this time to, uh, speak. So I'd like to, I'm a resident of Glendale, um, which is primarily a one- and-two-family zoned area. Um, I wanna thank council members Ariel and Holden for speaking up on what our communities have been providing as feedback and standing up for protecting, you know, our way of life and how we chose, uh, our neighborhoods to live in. Um, as they already noted, the areas which they represent has many infrastructure issues such as flooding, electrical, and not to mention crowded schools, lack of police resources, hospitals, sanitation, et cetera. And this plan does not address any of them. You're putting the, the hu- horse, the cart before the horse. I chose to live in Glendale because it's a low-density and quiet area where most homes are owner-occupied and that helps preserve pride and have a vested stake in the neighborhood as opposed to, um, areas where buildings are owned by developers. To say each neighborhood will only be adding a little more housing is very disingenuous as this is a target squarely on the backs of the low-density areas like where I live. This proposal is a gift to developers, plain and simple. We all know developers have deep pockets and can outbid most prospective homeowners looking to own their own home and eventually build generally, generational wealth. This will effectively end the dream of home ownership in New York City as developers scoop up one-to-two-family properties as they hit market and convert them to higher density. They also have the ability and the means to sit on these properties once they buy them so that they can combine lots and build even larger apartment buildings. All this while there is absolutely no requirement for any of the units to be actually affordable. I am vehemently opposed to this plan. I understand that there is an affordable housing shortage. This will not solve that problem. It may bring more, some more units to market, but I don't believe they will be affordable at all.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Denise Lynn.
Not present.
Cheryl Leverett.
Good afternoon and thank you, this opportunity. Uh, I would, I am also a member of the Addis Lake Park Civic Association. Thank you, Mr. Scarborough, for speaking for us so eloquently. I would like to say that the, the.
Hey Amanda. Hey Dawn, how's it going?
Good, good.
The elements, um, which are allowing the less than of, uh, half a mile radius of, uh, three-story buildings in historic areas, um, is a travesty. Um, it will, in fact, impede on the lifestyle of the families who have purchased these homes in these areas, whether it be in Addis Lake Park or Forest Hills. And so again, I echo, uh, the Addis Lake Park Civic Association stance and the stance of all of the homeowners in areas, um, who have chosen to buy homes in areas where they have green space and space to raise their children in a certain type of way. Um, no to the City of Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Collette Wong. Unmute. Ca- Collette, Collette. All right, we're gonna go to Kim Wake Cummings.
Not present.
Mike Bills.
Not present.
Uh, there's not another Christopher Johnson on, right? I think he testified in person.
Yeah, he did.
Say it again. He did. Okay, got it. Thomas Holman.
Not present.
Richard Ross.
Not present.
Roslyn Smyrnoff.
Not present.
Asia Thomas.
Not present.
Catherine Mueller.
Not present.
Emily Chin Gay. Emily, you may unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You may begin.
Amazing. Hi, thank you so much again to the Borough President and for the opportunity to speak at today's public hearing. My name is Emily Chin Gay. I'm an Astoria resident and I'm here to speak in favor of City of Yes Housing Opportunity. Uh, the zoning reform addresses several challenges our neighborhoods face. And as our city continues to grow, it's evident that the current outdated policies are not working and are pricing out many of our neighbors. I particularly wanna support eliminating parking mandates citywide. This change won't remove existing parking or restrict new developments, but will allow each neighborhood to build parking based on the actual demand. By lifting these mandates, developers can prioritize creating more affordable housing above ground. Building one parking spot can cost up to $150,000, whereas constructing a studio apartment can be just $180,000 to construct. Transportation is the second-leading cause of climate change emissions here in New York City. Parking minimums encourage car ownership and driving, leading to increased traffic congestion and harmful emissions that worsen health outcomes for all New Yorkers, particularly low-income communities. We need to move away from our car dependency and explore ways to provide reliable, accessible public transportation for all New Yorkers, especially in the outer boroughs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Y Wagner. Y-I-I. Okay.
Please unmute you.
Alrighty, uh, Carol McCarthy.
Carol, please unmute.
All right, Ravi Sriram.
Hello?
Yes, you may begin.
Yes, hi, uh. Okay, uh, first of all, uh, thank you, uh, Borough President Richards, uh, for having me. Um, and, uh, I'd like to voice my, uh, I guess basically my, uh, uh, my objection to the City of Yes. Uh, I believe it would place an unnecessary burden on existing neighborhoods. Um, I don't believe high-density housing in low-density neighborhoods is the solution to solve the, uh, affordable housing crisis, in my opinion. Um, furthermore, I believe it will ultimately only benefit the developers. And it may simply result in, uh, uh, actually may do the opposite and may instead, uh, uh, result in luxury, uh, buildings. Um, and, um, furthermore, you know, uh, you know, I'm in Northeast Queens and, uh, we're actually in a transit desert. And, um, also, uh, it's my opinion that high-density housing will also place a strain on our sewer system and our utilities. And, uh, and also in addition, um, the accessory dwelling units are not a good idea. Uh, as I, I believe people really should live in, um, homes and, and, you know, whether they be apartments, uh, or houses. But, uh, that's, uh, my, uh, uh, what I wanted to say. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Andy Guau.
You're welcome.
Not present.
I don't know because I.
Andy Guau, okay. Uh, Michael Okane.
Not present.
Sherry Algrito, Community Board Chair.
Not present.
Lorena de Filipez. De Filipez.
Not present.
John Su.
Not present.
Steven Schaub. Bushakal.
Not present.
Linda Figliola.
Not present.
Wing Joe.
Not present.
Tony Brown.
Not present.
Dion Robleski.
I'm here.
Yeah, come, all right. Hi, Diane.
Hi, thank you so much for having this hearing today. I'm just so grateful that we're having more opportunities to speak about this. Um, I was at the community board meeting in Forest Hills and a, a good friend of mine who might speak later, um, is on his call. Uh, she introduced me to this whole City of Yes months ago. And, um, so I've heard about it, a, a lot about it. And, uh, I wanna say, when I think of a developer, I go right, I, I live in Flushing, New York. Um, I think of a developer years ago who bought the RKO, movie theater, the RKO Keith's, a Stark movie theater that was on Northern Boulevard in Flushing. And this gentleman was supposed to work around the, uh, landmark-preserved lobby. And needless to say that after so much litigation and the mess that he made with that ice source standing there for over 20 years, he ruined everything, he lost it, and he got in a lot of trouble. I don't trust developers. Um, I do not believe they're coming in with affordable housing when they're saying market-rate housing. Nobody has ever said it's going to be affordable. I live in the area of Vicky Palladino, who spoke earlier. I am, um, one of her constituents and I appreciate everything she said. I am a person who received money from FEMA a few years ago because my personal house in, uh, North Flushing, 190th Street flooded to the point of where my husband and I just couldn't see the water even going down at midnight. Um, when I think of neighbors of ours, I didn't know them personally, but a few blocks away drowned in their own apartments because of basement apartments, um, not having the proper way to get out. There's only one way to get out of a pa- a basement apartment. They're not letting you go up in their house. You gotta go out the door, which if you're underwater and flooding, you're not getting out. I don't think it's a great idea and I don't know if we'll have enough people to even supervise and make sure that basement apartments are up to code. My mother grew up in Laurelton. Um, I know almost every neighborhood in Queens because I just love driving around Queens. And when I think of those areas, Cambria Heights, St. Albans, and I don't know if I'm going to get the right neighborhood, but I love sometimes when I get off the Cross Island and I see this neighborhood. It could be Cambria Heights where every single one of the houses has a beautiful lamppost in front of it with just a little white globe light that's bit, that the whole neighborhood is lit by these singular globe lights. That must be there for 50 years. I don't wanna see that ripped down to build, uh, something else. And I'm just gonna finish with this. My block that I live on, on, uh, 35th Avenue between 190th and 191st Street, these are, these houses, these Tudor houses that are all connected, were built in 1925. I don't think it's above a developer to come and knock on the 10 houses' doors and say, listen, I know your house is worth a million, but I'm gonna give you 2 million to leave. I can assure you, probably at least half of them would take the 2 million and run. They would take over my block, rip down the whole.
Uh, we're gonna wrap up?
They'll rip down the whole 10-family block where they're all one-family houses and put up a five-story with 40 apartments where there used to be 10, and that's just not acceptable. Thank you so much, Borough President. I really appreciate your time. And yes, like someone else said, your stamina.
Thank you. Carol Papadatis.
Not present.
James Gallagher.
Not present.
Eileen Amato.
Not present.
Kevin Zelaya, Zelaya.
Not present.
Joseph Lebamsky.
Not present.
Lenora Miller.
Not present. Uh, the next one.
Lauren Joy.
Anna Marie Prono.
Okay, oh, okay. Anna Marie Prono.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much, uh, Borough President Donovan Richards for having this hearing today. My name's Anna Marie Prono. I live in Forest Hills, Community Board Six area. I'm a licensed architect with 30 years of construction experience. And I may be the first architect to say that I am against the City of Yes. The Department of City Planning has been deficient in demonstrating a credible infrastructure expansion to support the City of Yes. The additional dwelling units, we've talked about basement apartments in existing homes and, and flooding. Oh, I'm sorry, I just lost my place. Um, we talked about the flooding and there, there is no means of egress. People have mentioned that. Diane just mentioned somebody drowning in their basement apartment. New York City Building Code requires that occupants have two means of egress. City planning has failed to share a solution to this life-threatening situation. Attic apartments in existing homes, to convert existing attics into livable spaces, a third floor needs to be added. It's unlikely that existing homes can structurally support another level. Taller homes mean less light for neighbors. Attic apartments require two means of egress too. Installing fire escapes on the side of residents would affect our neighborhood character and not in a positive way. Converting garages into apartments, water, sewer, and power is necessary for garage units. Driveways that are often shared or used by neighbors to access their homes are gonna be demolished to install major services. Jobs are rarely finished on time and often, often inconvenience many. Burdens to the existing structures. The electrical grid, although Con Edison's Reliable Clean City Project is slated to add 900 megawatts of transmission capacity across the city, this is for electric vehicle charging stations and replacing existing fossil-fuel systems in buildings. It is not about providing food for new or existing homes. The sewers and stormwater, we have not been told how this is going to impact the additional housing. Adding more people adds water and sewage usage. With buildings and paved areas, water will not be absorbed into the ground. Rather, it's gonna go into the combined sewer, overtaxing the currently at-capacity wastewater treatment plants. Tr- uh, transportation, uh, has been talked about, but plans to improve or expand the existing bus or subway systems are not forthcoming. Without such, there will be overcrowding and unsafe travel. Some lines are at capacity already and can't handle increase in ridership. Street parking will be reduced with the City of Yes. Developers will not. Street parking will be reduced with the City of Yes. Developers will not be required to provide parking for their Yes, I will. And as many garages turn into ADUs, both the homeowner and the ADU tenants are gonna need parking spaces. Approval of the City of Yes does not solve the housing shorter, shortage. Rather, it brings forth a multitude of project, problems for which solutions have not been forthcoming. It also eliminates future input from elected representatives and residents of New York City. Um, just because, and this is a new national trend in California
If you can wrap up.
Doing it doesn't mean it's right for New York City. I am opposed to the City of Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ying Kuan Zhu?
Hi, BP. The, the following five names are not present, so we'll go to Robert Cottington.
Okay.
Please unmute Robert.
Alrighty, Yahuda Pollock?
Not present.
Nick? Deonte?
Not present.
All right, are there any other individuals that we've left out? Anyone present? Alrighty, is that it?
Keith?
Oh, okay. Michael Keith, I thought, went. Michael Keith went, right? Mm-hmm. Do we see anyone else? All right, seeing none, no other individuals. I want to thank everybody uh, for coming out. And first of all, thank Queens for certainly being engaged in this conversation um, on the City of Yes proposal. Uh, of course, want to thank uh, all of the individuals in my office before I close out. Uh, Lisa, uh, Sola, of course, to Vanessa and Omar, all of our interns, my chief of staff, Michael Mallon, Ludi, uh, everybody who made uh, today possible, of course, so um, security, to the Police Department, thank you for being here. And of course, we hear passionate, passion on all sides uh, of the conversation. And we are in a housing shortage and I have the bird's eye view certainly on this issue. Um, so I have to always look at this from a global perspective, not just a lo- a local perspective, uh, being that we get uh, the bird's eye view on this. Uh, we certainly will take into account things we've heard from both sides today. Uh, it is my hope to issue a recommendation. When is my recommendation due, Lisa? Before September, uh, but we will probably uh, wrap it up within two weeks uh, and certainly get back. There were definitely legitimate concerns raised on infrastructure, um, on transportation, um, certainly on the affordability conversation and certainly as somebody who was the chair of the zoning committee who knew, who knows that we did not build enough housing for people earning 70,000 and under for the last decade and beyond, uh, we are at a crisis and mu- many young people are leaving the city because they are priced out. And the data doesn't lie on that. So we hope to arrive at a conclusion and, you know, I will always say uh, we're never gonna make everyone happy, but at the end of the day, it's about making sure we can leave this borough better and certainly the city better. Uh, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. And our next scheduled public hearing will be on August, Thursday, August 15th uh, at 9:30 a.m. is regularly scheduled each month. And that will be a hybrid land use public hearing. Want to thank everybody for joining you uh, or joining us today and want to thank everybody once again for sharing your perspectives. Take care.